Thanks, William.
Thanks.
Where'd it go?
Right there.
Is that mine or yours?
It's mine, but you can use it.
Yeah, mine.
This is the guy who did it, he's on my computer.
Did you steal him once again?
I did.
Alright, okay, so, um...
Ribbity.
Alright, so, let me see that. Alright, the next item we're going to number eight, and that is the, um, veterans-only parking space designation. Kevin, you want to give us the information that that is all about?
Sure, so, this was presented to us by the town's veterans agent prior to the actual finding out of a House bill that was filed, which you have in your packet, that was filed on behalf of a number of state representatives. And this, this came up through our veterans agent, who, I think noted that communities were, were going down this path and looking at Ashland as an example, and I think Marlborough as well. He was going to come in and speak to the board, given the timeliness of the meeting and having to open up the hearing, it didn't, didn't work out that, to that way. But, the intent behind the, the House article that has been filed is to provide for a, or require a municipality, town or city, municipal town hall, city hall, to provide for a designated veterans-only parking, with specific language about, that would be added to a particular veterans-only parking sign. The requirement for that would be that the actual veteran also have a plate that is noted as such, and that's, that's what's before the House as a proposal. As I said, many communities who are kind of, already kind of going down this path, others have decided to not only at town hall, but at, at parking spaces throughout the community, provide for the same option. One of the requirements in the House bill is that, you know, it be free to park, which isn't an issue for us at our town hall, it already is, and it's only during town hall operation hours that it is, you know, restricted, or, you know, for that purposes solely. So, it, you know, kind of would be up to the board, to what level we want to go that direction, you know, if we wanted to consider, you know, just kind of doing it as a, a town hall dedicated space, or if, you know, we would also, obviously could have the option of putting one in, you know, in another dedicated town parking area or parking lot, if we so choo- chose as well. So, that's, you know, the recommendation, if we were to look at it from, you know, from a town hall perspective, there's three 30-minute town hall business parking-only spaces. It could be that we, you know, we took one of those spaces and made one of them designated, or, you know, looked at another area, but if, if that was the direction, we were going to go in.
Question.
What's the enforcement, somebody who parks there, that, I mean, is, is there a...
So, there is a enforcement penalty that's provided, I think it's like a hundred dollar ticket. It's, it's provided for in the House bill, when it becomes an actual law, or statute.
It goes to the community, or goes to the state?
Uh, it goes...
Well, the mayor of police would be right.
Yeah, it's a, it's a surchargeable, uh, it's also a surchargeable offense.
Surchargeable?
Yeah. And it's, uh, it's a fine of a hundred dollars and may reme-...
Where's this parking space gonna be?
Yeah. And you may remove the violating...
Right front vehicle.
I don't have the three PDFs that apparently this thing needed, because I don't have my laptop, right? But, quick question. So, I'm a veteran.
Yep.
So, I decide to come in and conduct town hall business, do I get to park there all day long, with a veteran plate?
No.
Yeah.
So...
As long as it's during town hall hours.
Hypothetically, one of the police officers, okay, who's a veteran, with the veteran plate, can pull in there and park there, and park there all day.
Can we impose a limit?
So, it just seems, I mean, for one space, it's a lot of paperwork to...
Yeah, that's fair. You know, essentially what it says is veteran parking only, this space is reserved for those who have served. And again, this is, this is what's being proposed, and we'll likely get...
Does it restrict the limiting hours? Say, limited to one hour?
It does require, you know, the vehicle to display that special plate. Beyond that, it's just kind of says, you can't charge, park there, and it, it's only required, or enforceable during town hall operating hours. But I think, you know, the intent for us, you know, in that scenario, we would try to, you know, require, you know, town employees, dedicated parking area.
So essentially, Wayne, the veterans agent, gets his own parking space?
Yeah, I don't think that's the intention, but I, I hear you.
Thanks.
So, this would go into effect only if the bill was passed, or would we...
No, you know, the requirement, which is shall, would be, but the recommendation from our veterans agent...
We're being proactive.
Was to, you know, to, to get ahead of it, and it's the right thing to do, and his recommendation is to provide for a dedicated spot, and assuming that it's going to be a mandated requirement, anyway. And I don't know when this, did you get a sense from Rep. Hogan when that was going to be moved on?
She had submitted it, that group had submitted that bill.
Okay, so, I'm not sure...
The time.
When they'll act on it, I, you know, I don't think it's a very controversial piece, but, so, the assumption is that would it get approved, but...
Mike, something to say? Mike say something, Chris.
Oh, Mike's got a hand up.
Oh, sorry.
I have a question, Kevin, I'm a veteran, my lottery number was six, so, I probably would get first. So, what you're saying is in the bill, in order to have that spot, you'd have to, I would have to have a veterans plate?
Correct.
So, I'd be forced, if I want that spot, I have to go out and get a veterans plate?
You're not going to get it because you work at town hall, we've already said, no way.
No.
Yeah, all, all day long in Ashland, or Marlborough for you, Mike. But yeah, so similar to requires a handicap placard, you would have to show that you're eligible to parking that space, and their proposal is via the dedicated license plate.
I think it makes sense as a town hall.
That shows. So, you know, if, if the, if the board was in agreement, let's provide a space at town hall, logistically, we'll, we'll make that work, if they wanted to hold off until it's mandated, or if you want to have a bigger conversation about whether we want to do it in other locations, that's kind of what, you know, where we're at.
Do we necessarily have to have a vote on it, as far as...
We have to decide what we want it to look like.
Do we understand what it's going to be?
We defer until the bill passes or not, with maybe, if there's more details in the bill, when it comes out about like restriction on hours?
We could, I don't know, I don't know if...
Approve it now for enactment, if, when it passes?
Yeah, I like that.
And I personally have no problem in approving it...
Yeah.
Now, and enacting it now, I am concerned about Terrence's point about some police officer, or, you know, not disparaging the police officer.
Yeah, not to pick on the police, but...
Or Terrence, or, or, you know, Diane, Diane stops, Diane stops in for the day, and she parks out there.
I'll go get them.
Car with the veterans plate. But, you know, I, I don't have a problem in enacting it, but I don't, you know, I don't think it should go beyond the town hall spot.
Yeah, no, that's fair. And I think, as I said, I mean, this has been on our plate for a little while, as far as priority getting it on, that Wayne had, Wayne, the veterans' agent, had presented, you know, to have for consideration, and then subsequently, we became aware of the, the House bill that was already, kind of in, in effect, rolling out as well, so...
Do we want to run it by the parking subcommittee first, before we, oh, we don't anymore, we need to, we need a new member, actually, because Tim resigned.
Chris, can I ask a quick question?
Yep.
I'm not really seeing how you guys are going to guess what the final rules are going to be from the state law. It seems awkward to institute something with some policy things, and then you have to change it to meet the state law. It's kind of hard, I mean, it's just a current bill, and, you know, it's going to be amended and tweaked or something. I don't see how you're going to guess what the sign's even going to have to say.
I think the idea of approving it...
At this point, you know, it's a fair point, but we can be a leader, make up our own sign.
Or could we...
For 15 bucks, we can get a, know the sign if the language changes, or we can sit on it and not do much.
So, there are other towns that have already done this?
Yes, Ashland, I think it's seven, Marlborough has a number of them.
And so, they have signs and all of that stuff?
And the language, the specific language is proposed in the bill, I don't, you know, it might be an amendment, it might not get approved, but, again, the initiative wasn't because of the House bill, the initiative was because of the veterans' agent, you know, that would be a good thing to provide in the community.
If it's coming, if it's coming from Wayne, I mean, you don't, we don't need a House bill to do it.
Right.
It's coming from Wayne, let's just get Wayne to, get Wayne involved, and then maybe he can just, you know, put it off as what he anticipates the rules to be, or what he likes the rules to be, to the veterans, he's the veterans' attorney.
Yeah, I, I guess really the conversation is that...
Couldn't be bothered to come collect a check for 1,400 dollars on Veterans Day, at least he can do his House bill, pocket of veterans' gas. So, let him do that, and then we can go on another time. Alright? I think you can vote on it, to Bill's point, you don't know what it's going to be, why vote on it? If Wayne doesn't want to give us the rules and tell us where he wants it to be, or what he wants it to be, you know, I want parking space for veterans, but what are the rules? Really ours? What's the location? What's the limit? You know, what is the time limit? Is there a time limit? You know, do you need a placard? Do you need a sign? I mean, there are a lot of different variables, let him get involved or stay involved in the process, and then we can, but we can even come to city and tell us what he wants to do. You can't vote on it, if you want to make it up, you have to have the information to do it. And if you want to wait for the state, you won't have veterans' parking here for three years, that's fair enough. We can do it in one meeting if he shows up and tells what the vision of the group is, you know, so...
Given with that, maybe, I mean, there's part of it, what will be on the sign and the placards, and then I think the other part would be like what the instructions to town hall would look like, or, it would be separate from it.
Okay, we got it. Okay? Yeah, nice to have some rules, you know, suggesting what you might want to see it be.
Mark said he thought he had a prime spot.
Yeah, I thought he was going to be...
Yeah, I know Mark has a special plate.
Yep.
You?
What? I got the other veterans' plate, just to park.
Alright, master plan steering committee.
So, the board was provided a memo, actually, this afternoon, with a recommendation from myself, essentially, the, so, the purpose behind the agenda item is to discuss the composition of the, of the master plan steering committee, but also determination of what level of involvement does the board want to be in. So, as noted in the memo, the, the master plan steering committee is recommended to form as a, as an ad hoc committee, which would be a typical, it's not one of our standing chattered committees, looking at, as you're well aware, we solicited resident interest for folks to serve on it, and that has since closed, we've received seven responses, a letter of interest for folks to, to serve on it, and essentially, the steering committee will serve in a guidance role to move the process forward, manage the consultant that is hired, set meet milestones, schedule additional contributors, and oversee the general content. The desire is to have the steering committee appointed prior to finalizing the short list of qualified consulting applicants, and provide input in the process, which is expected for December timeframe, you know, around the holiday time, but that's the expectation of, of awarding that. The recommendation is the steering committee of nine members, to include two planning board representatives, a board of selectmen representative, conservation commission representative, and then five at-large resident members with the town plan, serving as ex officio member. And of course, I noted in the memo that it's essential that additional staff committees and residents, as requested, will, will be contributing and meeting with the steering committee throughout the process.
Kevin, when you say two representatives, first off, this is not governed by state requirements or anything along those lines, this is just our recommendation as to how many people...
So, the makeup of it isn't, you know, looked at, you know, several other communities, what is, what is governed is the actual planning board's responsibility to ensure a, a master plan.
Yes, got that.
Yeah, but the actual makeup is...
The makeup of a committee, okay. So, then the other question I would have is, given the propensity of, you know, people who are involved in committees to have trouble getting there frequently, or whatever, I have no problem with the nine, but, planning board representatives and board of selectmen representatives are, is your vision, or is part of this discussion, that they can be appointed members by those committees, or members of those committees?
So, yeah, I think what you're looking at is probably similar to the CPC. I think it would either, it's going to be a committee that's either appointed by myself, or a committee appointed by this board, and what we, what I would envision is that the planning board would, would provide somebody that this board...
But not necessarily from their board.
They wouldn't do the appointment. Though ideally, it would be from their board.
From their board.
Yeah, not a, not a...
You know, I, I get nervous about, I get nervous about especially planning board volunteers to have meeting fatigue...
Yeah.
Because they're going to their own meetings all the time, and to have the extra...
So, they have expressed specifically interest in having at least two members involved, they reached out, they feel that, you know, it's a major responsibility in the planning board's role, and they have, they have requested that, you know, if a committee's made up, that they would have two members.
Okay.
It's, again, it's not set, you know, if you want, you know, we could, if there was really strong interest in having two board of selectmen members, you know, we could adjust that number. You know, I think the nine is kind of a sweet spot, we needed to have enough representation where seven wasn't going to cut it, if you start to get above the nine members, and it becomes somewhat of a, a committee that's tough to handle.
I have similar concerns about, maybe other members of our board feel differently, but I have similar concerns about meeting fatigue for our five members, too.
Sure, yeah.
And that's why, you know, could we appoint somebody to represent the board of selectmen, and then to report to us periodically, whatever, I mean, just a thought.
How often do you envision this doing, sort of meeting? Like, I, I would be interested in doing it for the board if no one else was, but, like, it's those night meetings that are getting difficult, because there's only so many nights that we...
Sure. I would, I would think they probably would, would try to meet, you know, once they've consulted on board, and maybe, it may back off, you know, until they, you know, they have the work that they're working on, and can come back and report back to the committee. But I would think initially, it would probably be at least bi-weekly, to get things going, and selected the process, and then it may, may turn into less, I mean, as, as you know, it's an 18 to 24-month process, it's what's planned, so...
Yeah, I had the opportunity to review the draft RFP, the RFP that was sent out for potential consultants for this, and I think to Kevin's point, it's, the goal is not to, I mean, also thinking the budget that we have available for this engagement, right? I mean, it's going to be limited by those factors in terms of the numbers of convening. I think to, you know, in much the same way that the planning board saw the obvious need to have, felt it was worth having two reps, I, I think, you know, given the way in which this master plan process has cut, touched on so many other things that we have spoken about as a board, you know, having a member from the board, we'll just have to figure it out.
Yeah.
And I think just see, much like we've done with the budget, so, maybe if we need to have an alternate structure in place.
If this means we can certainly rotate through it.
Yeah.
And, 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 any member, I would think, you know, that's, that's the case, but, there is, there is an issue with David's, first time I heard that term, meeting fatigue.
I do like it, yeah. I guess the first decision to make, and that's what I'm looking for guidance, who can process along, is, is, does this board want to be the appointing authority?
Yes.
Okay, so, moving that forward piece, part along...
I also hear you say that seven people have already applied.
So, seven, seven have expressed interest, of that seven, I would say one is not eligible, because it's somebody that we actually do business with, as a vendor, and they, by, you know, because of requirements of that, they, they can't be on the appointed committee. They're not a special town employee, and there's restrictions there. The other one is actually a conservation commission member, that I would assume would, would fill that role, anticipating that there's not anybody else on the conservation commission that, that was interested in doing it. So, that leaves us really with five that have expressed, you know, out of the seven.
I still think we should have a, a meeting with those five, to hear their thoughts, because you don't want somebody coming in and saying, yep, I think we should have urban sprawl like Route 9, and that's what I think the future of the town...
So, of that, there's various levels of response, I guess, some were very thorough with why, you know, why they felt they would be a good contributor, others were kind of like, I'm interested, let me know the next step. So, with that being said, and, you know, if this board is going to move forward with doing the appointments, what I would request is something a little more in-depth, is a letter of interest, and then ask that, you know, likely that they, you know, that we try to line it up for probably the December 5th meeting, which will have buildings that will be here, as well as the planning board chair for another discussion topic.
Instead of a letter of interest, can we just send them all to save like three or four questions for them to answer, so we can be universal?
Yeah, sure, sure.
You know, equalizer?
What, what do you, what, what do you envision, the, I guess, you know, some people get on some of these things, and they want to know what, what's their, you know, there's a sense of authority, you know, over the, the process.
What will the guidelines be, you mean?
You know, what is, what is there, you know, is there a, is there a, um, set of, you know, guidelines or rules, or what, you know, what's, what's their goal, what's their charge, what's their responsibilities?
Yeah.
Do we have that, or do we have to create that, or, you know?
A very limited highlight of what kind of the steering committee's role is, but yeah, it's pretty, it's fairly well-defined, and again, it's not dictated under statute or defined by charter, so, that can be, but, you know, there's enough of, of folks that have gone through this process and...
But I think we need to, to Chris's point, you know, maybe for Bill, because I know as he's kind of been thinking through this process, come up with like what he sees as the mission statement and the responsibilities, just because, you know, it's, everyone might think they have the same understanding, but until you have the same piece of paper that says, no, this is what we all agreed and understand our role to be, it's a totally different thing.
Yeah, to your point, it would be nice to have that piece of paper when we sit and talk with the five people, so we, you know, we understand, before we start, this is what it is.
How long do we advertise?
For the...
For this?
RFP, or for the...
For the people to actually...
It was in the paper, it was like a, yeah, 30 days.
It was in the, unlimited.
I shared about Facebook, a lot too, I've gotten emails from people.
It was a press release, it's been on the town website, it was pushed out through social media, it was advertising the beacon.
I saw it get picked up in the Globe.
The day it went up, people sending emails, I'm interested.
Right, right. Yeah, and with that, you know, kind of with that, I mean, yeah, in order to have this discussion, we kind of had to have a closing date, but, to that point, yeah, I think we're really going to have five, five interested that have expressed it in five openings. We don't have to appoint them all, but there's not a lot of, you know, going to be, it doesn't appear there's going to be a lot of decision over one versus another candidate. So, we'll move forward with, the board of selectmen will be the appointing, I think this board will decide, you know, obviously they represent, will reach out to the planning board as well, and the, for, and conservation commission, and then they have the five at-large folks that have expressed interest coming for interview discussion. That's all.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
What else we've got is the FYE 2018 priorities?
Yeah, just a recap from our priorities, goals, special meeting that we had, kind of captured a lot of it, thank you to Cheryl for providing her, her notes as well to help kind of build this out. We met, ended up meeting mid-September?
Mid, early October.
Yeah, and, you know, again, I think where we're at now, being towards the end of November, I think the three goals are realistic, and priorities are realistic and genuine, you know, that's kind of where we're at now.
Cool, and thank you, Kevin, I know looking through it, like the new sub bullet forms are economic development, the communication reflects that, that dialogue we had, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Cheryl provided notes from, from her piece of it, and pulling it together.
My inability not to take care of it.
Yeah, those type of meetings can get tough, because we sidetrack and trying to focus back on to, alright, what did, what did we decide on? So, yeah, I think, I think unless there's any major changes, I think, you know, recommendation would be to approve the priorities for FYE 18, and then, you know, on my end, we distribute that, and, you know, continue to have the dialogue of the board's priorities and goals with our department heads and other folks as well.
Yeah. Yeah, motion to accept the 2018 board of selectmen priorities?
No.
Um, any further discussion? Item 10, employment contract.
Item 11 is a ratification of the assistant town administrator employment contract, some, as the board knows, is some language, some minimal language changes, cleanup from the expired agreement. Beyond that, most of the terms of the agreement have not changed, as far as benefits are defined. The, the proposed agreement for ratification provides a 1.6% increase on average over the three years, and, yeah.
Do you need a motion for this, Cheryl?
Yes.
There's a motion?
There's no motion there, but we'll make one.
Move the...
Yeah, the motion should be moved to approve the assistant town administrator's employment contract through June 30th, 2020.
It's there. On the online version, recommended action, move to approve assistant town.
Oh, yeah, it must, maybe did this get printed before, man? I don't know, what?
I didn't remember typing it.
Alright, move to approve, the action is move to approve assistant town administrator employment contract through June 30th, 2020. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. You don't have any discussion? I don't know what it is.
What the?
No, I'm, no, I'm just saying, does anybody have anything to discuss, anybody have anything to say about it? I'm pretty sure we all know what, exactly what it says.
It's changed from the previous, right?
Yeah.
It's got different language in it, right? It's the one that we used, that we just sent out?
Correct. Approved by town council, if anyone that much knows, so... What was your favorite? Please. That was easy. Do we design this one, or...
Yeah, you should have two originals, and then we'll get town clerk to test. Town administrators' report beyond what's been provided, I just want to make sure the board, as a whole, received my email about the Assabit Regional Vocational Technical High School, follow-up from my meeting with, with the superintendent and the business manager from Assabit. You know, as, as you noted, as you read, you know, the assessment for 19 is going to be fairly significant, student population is grown by 13, from 54 to 67, and the, you know, the, I think the total assessment is, for, for the Assabit assessment, it's going to go up about 34%. It's a preliminary budget, but the preliminary budgets typically have been pretty close, if not have dropped a little bit, but I would anticipate, I mean...
You don't have any discussion? I don't know what it is.
What the?
No, I'm, no, I'm just saying, does anybody have anything to discuss, anybody have anything to say about it? I'm pretty sure we all know what, exactly what it says.
It's changed from the previous, right?
Yeah.
It's got different language in it, right? It's the one that we used, that we just sent out?
Correct. Approved by Town Council, if anyone that much knows. What was your favorite? That was easy. Do we design this one or?
Yeah, you should have two originals, you know, get Town clerk to test. Town Administrator's report beyond what's been provided. I just want to make sure the, the board as a whole received my email about the Assabit Regional Vocational Technical High School. Follow-up from my meeting with, with the superintendent and the business manager from Assabit. You know, as, as you noted, as you read, you know, the assessment for nineteen is going to be fairly significant. Student population is grown by thirteen from fifty-four to sixty-seven. And the, you know, the, I think the total assessment is for, for the Assabit assessment is going to go up about thirty-four percent. It's a preliminary budget, but the preliminary budgets typically have been pretty close, if not have dropped a little bit. But I would anticipate, I mean, for myself going into the budget prep process, that's the number we're gonna use. And if it, if there's any reduction, then great. Anticipating final budget approvals, as I noted in there from them, of that, of the school committee. There's a couple of unknowns that they're dealing with, particularly the health insurance costs. And as well as they haven't settled two of the collective bargaining agreements. But they have, they have conservatively estimated on both of those items. So that's a, you know, a bigger conversation for another time, you know, as we talk about the budgets. But I just wanted to make sure the board has seen that. As, as, can you put in the email, so just so I'm reading correctly? So we're gonna be on the hook for 1.1 million. Correct, which is an increase of two hundred and?
Five percent. And that's reflective of the increase of the students.
Two hundred and ninety thousand. Two hundred and ninety, yes, correct. So that's, you know, that comes right off the top as a budget line item increase before we even talk about anything else. So, you know, it is a big number when we're talking about, you know, right around a million dollars in available revenue. To have that, you know, a little under a third of that absorbed by that is, it's a big number.
If I'm not mistaken, we'd had, like last year, we benefited because we had fewer students go, so that's why our relative.
We've, we've, so, yes and no. When we kind of benefited, we took on within the, within our tax rate, which wasn't, it wasn't voted as excluded. So we had to absorb it within the general fund budget, which was to take on the, the construction assessment on a twenty-five-year principal and interest payment. So we went from a zero number to two hundred and sixty thousand. And then even though the assessment on the actual number of students had dropped, because I think a big driver of that was the new high school opening and, you know, folks staying, you know, to take advantage of that piece. It helped absorb it, but even though, even though the population of per student assessment dropped, the ed, the cost assessment went up fairly significantly. And then this year, so the way, there's three assessments, they take it as that debt assessment, which is locked in at eleven point three percent of the total debt at that time, because it was, it was, we were locked in at eleven point three. It's a twenty-five-year principal and interest debt payment schedule. The other thing is a three-year average, which determines your capital assessment, so it's a three-year enrollment average. And then you get a capital assessment, and then the third assessment to make up the total is the actual per-student charge. And that's where FY, you know, for nineteen versus eighteen is gonna be three, thirteen, which is a significant, you know, fairly significant increase. So I wanted to just make sure that, that we had that discussion. We'll, we'll talk obviously more as we get into budget stuff.
And the school committee's aware of that?
Yes, I sent it to all of them as well, as well as the, as well as the finance committee. That's all I had beyond the town hall holiday closing hours have been posted and made note of. I think that's it, in addition to my report.
Maybe we only have to sign two, but we are overachievers.
Here you go.
It's like signing.
Who's head is this?
Mine.
Oh, it's the towns.
Yeah, we all need to.
So Kevin?
Yes.
When we get into the, when the budget, you know, the budget comes, comes out?
Yes.
I'm just gonna look, I'm, you know, as we head towards the February meeting?
Yeah.
Insight of more, you know, kind of, we like to ramp up the insight and input we have as we move forward in that process. So we're, you know?
Right, so.
A little more able to answer some of the difficult questions we're gonna hear for sure this year?
The meeting scheduled for February tenth, the joint budget meeting?
Yeah.
I would hope to have some fairly well-budget numbers and, and presentation I could provide the board by January 21st timeframe, which is, which is where kind of in line with, with the expectation. As you know, budgets from the department heads are not due until the first, the second really of January. At that time, there'll be a number of meetings that I'll have with department heads to discuss their budgets and, and go through them. Look at, you know, continue to monitor revenue, you know, doubtful at that time there'll be any adjustment. As you know, the, the actual range for health insurance doesn't even become available until the MMA conference, which is the, the end of January. And then our actual percentage increase, so we'll get a range of, of two to twelve percent, and we don't know where we fit. But the, the actual fixed, we, we won't get until towards the end of February or early March. But yeah, as much as we have, try to get it early to the board, so there's some idea of where requests are at and kind of where we are. But January 21st, it'll definitely be, by then we'll be able to have, see something, you know, highly unlikely you'll be looking at a balanced, recommended budget, but at that point.
The numbers you just talked about, those are, those are hit the school budget or the overall town budget?
The town budget.
So those are separate than the panic in the schools?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, really, it's, it's not factored at all into any of their budget process.
Okay.
Specifically for the health insurance, as well as the property liability insurance, which will, will also have a fairly, you know, significant percentage increase.
But the 1.1 is in the school budget?
It's part of the total education, so there's, there's two budgets in education. There's the, there's the mained school district total number, and then there's the 1.1, which is the Assabit.
They'd be the question mark of that, right?
What's that?
They would be the requester of that as part of their overall budget ask?
They typically don't, they, the budget request is, is, you know, I don't even know that they even meet with Assabit. It's kind of, I think it's sort of, you know, I don't think there's any discussion amongst them. This year, because of the change, and I'm sure more than likely finance committee will ask that Assabit come in and do a presentation. And they, you know, historically have asked, periods where the assessment went down, we don't really need to talk about it. But certainly I would recommend, you know, that they would probably be brought in sometime in that timeframe, probably February, March. But it, it's added in by, you know, on our end as a total education. But obviously, as I have these discussions with the schools, you know, making sure they're aware of the total cost of education and those increases have to be offset somewhere. So. Did that answer your question, Chris?
Yeah, you know, that's fine. One, the other one is just the, you know, what, what do we? Naturally, everyone will be looking for what the accommodated cost and all that at some point.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Just take a kick around that number with the rest of them.
Right. We can, yeah, we've kind of already had, I mean, that's somewhat easier than adding in the new num, you know, the new numbers.
Right, because when those discussions start to take place in earnest, it's gonna be something that we'll need to, wanna be aware of.
Yep.
And then the other, the only other thing was, I know we mentioned a little bit last week, last meeting, we got off track based on some comments, and it really wasn't a discussion for debate or anything else but else. But I was just wondering if anybody had any, gave any consideration to the question about potential or possible mitigations if and/or when anything was to take place in part of what people were thinking along those lines? Aside from some of the things that, you know, we typically would expect, if anyone had any thoughts along those lines, if not?
Yeah, I mean, I think for, I had a, you know, I mean, some of the things I think have come up and sort of reflecting on different conversations. I mean, are there different ways that we can think of contributions into the sewer enterprise fund in particular? I mean, and one of the things I had meant to ask in terms for, my imperfect recollection, is like how we calculate fees on use for sewer, right? So like, I know we have a couple of residents, in-town residents, right, who are on town sewer, but not on town water. And most of our billing is based upon, anyway, you see where I'm going with all of this?
I do, yeah.
So what I'm trying to get a sense of is, you know, we had the public comment earlier about, you know, whether or not what Stantec has already scoped on the pipes includes the impacts of Powder Mill, and whether or not we kind of have some sufficient data to at least project what we might be looking at there.
So they did a model.
Right, because I remember.
Based on the?
Yeah, so I guess what I'm trying to think through is that beyond what we're thinking of in terms of hookups, et cetera, beyond what would be coming into the town in terms of, in this case, the out-of, out-of-town residential rate for sewerage fees, you know, above and beyond that, is there a way that we can be thinking about accommodations? I mean, I'm just, you know, recollecting what the developer's preliminary plan was back in April, and that's gone down in terms of the number of units that are Maynard units versus Acton. And yet, if there's a major catastrophe on the sewer system, that's falling on the town of Maynard. So I don't know where that kind of lives, or whether that's a conversation that's purely developer-driven, and whether we can look at like a multi-year kind of investment, or whether that's something that we need to be having different types of town-to-town conversations with the town of Acton.
I think it's a really good point. I think it also leads to the discussion of the need for a financial impact analysis on the project in general to weigh the impact that we might have on our infrastructure.
So, I think that, that's one of my thoughts, and then I think the other, you know, just in terms of general thinking, and I believe this was already stuff that, that had been put out there, was, you know, as we're thinking about accessibility and the, I'm not gonna get the name of the commission right, but the, the streets, the connectivity piece of, you know, being able to walkability. Thank you, the Complete Streets program. But, you know, what are accommodations that could be made that would help in terms of that development? And maybe stretching beyond that, further up Powder Mill towards town.
They say that they, I think he told us that there's sidewalk the whole way, right?
There is sidewalk, we did a must-see.
Sidewalk, sidewalk the whole way.
And we talked about maybe having an easement or something to lead to any kind of development they do by the river. So that it can be accessible and easier for people as Powder Mill Road develops potentially in the future for people to access and to do that riverwalk.
Yep.
If the business hands change. I mean, what I've talked to Kevin a lot about, what I want to see happen if we were to go forward with this and if we were to get money, is to see it to go into general pots like that. You know, money that we can put in a semi-restricted account for future infrastructure projects or future transportation, so that we can use it in whatever, on maynard way, yeah, that the town sees when we have a need, when it comes up. But in the meantime, it can accrue interest.
Right.
And build us a fund.
Yeah, I'd much rather that than, you know, a new, a new something, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's exactly what Chris's question was, was that type of input that we can, you know, start to?
I don't know, just based on talking to other people and, you know, the history of some of the other things that we've done recently in Maynard alone. You can ask for almost anything, you know, so, and it can, you know, so, if it becomes a negotiation about it, that's what it becomes. But it's pretty much anything, you know, anything's on the table, and other towns have asked for, and other towns are researching things that, you know, you would never expect would be part of a housing complex or an industrial complex, just, you know, just because someone, somebody asks. So it doesn't have to be inside a little box.
In addition to the sewer component, I mean, obviously, this project would have an impact on public safety. So one of the things that, you know, discussion is, you know, you know, there should be, you know, some contribution to public safety for the town's discretion on how it gets expended. Now, maybe, maybe it's our priority that we want to use X dollars for a purchase of a new ambulance, or maybe we want to use it for some other public safety initiative. But clearly identifying that the project's gonna have an impact on those services and the mitigation that, you know, that we would be seeking.
And then I would say, like, under the category of potpourri of things, I mean, another topic that had been mentioned was the idea of, you know, having, I think Bill and Wayne had looked into like the banner structure, like posted banners, so that instead of like, you know, just doing things, either the, the one LED sign that we put at 117 and 27, or I forget how you described it, Terrence, but when we have all the, the signs along Alumni Field. But the idea of having, you know, almost like the, like the street light type equivalents, where you can actually rack a banner on.
Yeah, it would be a permanent, permanent post.
Exactly, and then if people are doing an event, they can put the banners up. So it's just a different way to highlight when Maynard is doing town-centric events. But that's, I think they already have some explicit numbers against those, which aren't necessarily high, but, you know, but that's something to consider.
Yep, yeah, because part of the issue is we don't, we don't own the poles.
Right, we'd have to buy poles.
We own the lights, but the, the poles themselves are owned by the utility.
And they're very strict about stringing things.
So we would have to look at an installation of, to be able to do that. But yeah, we have the numbers and we, we know what that, so that's a good, that's.
Especially given that, that we're talking about a place that's right on one of the gateway roads into town, so.
Fair enough.
I was also thinking about the amount, I know that they've been very tight lipped about what they have available to offer us in their mitigation. But we know that if we don't offer sewer, then the only alternative is the costly endeavor going under the water system connecting to Acton. So whatever that number is, I think that should be what we use as the amount. Because if they're, if we're not gonna give them sewer, then they're gonna have to spend that money. They might as well spend slightly less and give us the money and get our sewer.
Yeah, there's something above the, the repair costs for, for the allowance of being able to tie into our sewers.
And I think to the comment that Mr. Tomlin made, you know, a couple of weeks ago, right, that it's, you know, we, we?
Change.
Yeah.
I'm gonna repeat a comment I made at the last meeting. I believe that because this issue is of such interest to a large portion of the community, that anytime it's discussed, it should be on the agenda as an item. It's unfair to the residents who were here earlier tonight, who wanted to hear about this project and were, were sitting here. They asked their, they made their comments at the outset, and I think they would have liked to be involved in a discussion like this to hear things and to make their comments. And I think it's inappropriate for the board to talk about it without having it as an agenda item.
I disagree, I think our meetings are publicly posted, they're public meetings, and if something comes up in comments in someone's report, it's fair game, we're not talking about the substantiveness of the project or if it's going forward. This is something that was on the agenda.
The open meeting law requires at any time that the chairman can reasonably assume that something is going to be discussed, that it should be on the agenda. And I'm not being critical, Chris.
I don't care.
I believe we should follow. I believe we should follow.
If I, if I'm sitting in here and there's a discussion that leads me to ask a question, when I get to that point in my time?
At that point, it's not, it's not reasonably expected.
Because it's written right here, as we, as we were discussing this thing, this came up, so I wrote it down. So that's why it took place.
I respectfully suggest that anytime we discuss this, it should be listed on the agenda as an item.
And we discussed last week that when there's something of substance to discuss, other than any of us sharing our own personal opinions in an open forum like this, that it will be on the agenda. So when it's gonna be something to discuss, like a project, or like a plan, or like something, it will be on the agenda.
David, I don't disagree with what you're saying, because of the fact that there's, there's some public perception directed at this. But I think if you look at our perspective, is we can't talk about this freely, like this group at?
Put it on the agenda, as you talked about.
Let me finish. We can't talk about this freely outside of this, okay? We, we can't, we can't collaborate and collude and talk about things, right? But they can, so, so when things come up, human nature sometimes is you want to follow a lead. So I don't think anybody is trying to talk about this, I specifically have not said a word about this project tonight. But sometimes these things do come up. One way we can get around that is, let's move the Selectman's comments to the front of the meeting then. So that the end of the meeting, then, and folks aren't, aren't missing, they know exactly what's on the agenda coming up.
My, my point on public posting of the, the agenda item is that people should be made aware that it's going to be spoken about publicly, so that they can arrive at the meeting and not have to be seeing it on television. Oh, Jesus, they're talking about it and drive down in the car. That's, that's not, the open meeting law is very specific, and I believe that we are walking a really thin ice on this particular topic. I really do.
I disagree, guess what? No, it wasn't an item that I was anticipating discussing, just something that came up in a conversation tonight, and I wrote it on my section where it says Chairman's Comments, and that's what it is, it's my comments. And if people don't want to go home at 7:15, they can stay after the public comments, after they take a couple potshots and run, go ahead. But if it comes up later on, based on some of their comments, it comes up, and you lose the opportunity to hear it. But it's public, it's taped, and Mark over there writes great notes and puts it in the paper, so people can hear it. But if you're gonna come at public comments, I'll make public comments the last item of the night, that maybe some people are standing actually participating, listen to a meeting. You don't come in, you come in at seven o'clock, take your shot and run, and you bring up comments that are gonna pause, cause someone on this table to say, gee, maybe I'll ask you a question about that during my comments section, and they've gone home. That's in violation of nothing, but your sensibilities. And if I violate your sensibilities once in a while, I apologize. But if someone takes a potshot and then storms out the door because they don't like the answer, they, they figure they got their point across, and it causes me, paused, to ask a question among the five of us at the end of the meeting, that's on them, not on me. And that's why the question came up, and then every time someone comes and takes a shot like? And that's why the question came up, and every time someone comes and takes a shot, like, you know, makes a comment or has had some point of discussion, and decides they want to go home as soon as they're done speaking, okay? They may miss the opportunity to hear what I have to say to you and Cheryl and Terrence and Melissa in regards to that subject, because they didn't stay for, for the rest of the meeting. And it's not something that was planned.
Mr. Chair, we got to do boardroom reports before we adjourn.
Yeah, right now.
All right, just making sure.
I'm done with mine, that was the end of mine. You're up.
All right, just a couple things, I have some time off coming up. I won't be at the next meeting, so if there's anything that you want to get through while I'm not here, that's your opportunity. I'll be traveling to the city of Berkeley, love, some business, so. It's supposed to be Philadelphia. Other thing I'd like to say is thank you to, and I did reach out to Aaron to let him know, Lieutenant Noble and I took a field trip down to the intersection of Brown Street and McNamara Street to follow up on the citizens' campaign, as well as my observation about the safety issues at the connection of the Asbury River Railroad across from Gulf Coast. We came up with some ideas. Aaron and the DBW folks have already gone ahead and put the new crosswalk out there. It's great, it looks fantastic, as a nice big white crosswalk would. You can definitely see the change from where they cut down a few trees. And also, they put a cone out there to further show drivers, you know, here they got, there's something coming up in the street that's different than it was before, right?
We also added one of those, just as a point of information to Walnut Street at the crossing where coming out of the Mill and Main project over to their private lot. And if you come down that hill, it can be difficult to see, so we, we added one in the center there as well.
Okay, good, good. So thank you to both DBW and MPD for stepping up to do that. I did have one request, furthering on what the chairman was getting at earlier, is budget season. In lieu of what's happening inside the town, leadership potential, things going on, I'd like to take a look at what the department had requests for budgets are.
Sure.
You know, before we make a decision on what they're getting. I'd like to, I want to start seeing some trends about what they're asking for, and maybe what we're missing, what we're not thinking about. So if we could arrange that, and I talked to some of my colleagues about that on one off, and
Yeah.
no one objected, so.
I mean, yeah, that's a good point. Unfortunately, the way the budget is received, because they're, if they're following my directive, they're not, they're not submitting what, what they would like in some cases, right? So it may be a case where they're submitting a budget that, because they're following the directive, that it's not going to show additional expenses needed or additional staff that's needed.
Maybe as a follow-up halfway through the year? If you do something where they submit a wish list, so you can start to see the things that they may be needing, and we can start to get a longer-term view.
Yep, we could do that as well. I mean, we could even do that with this budget process, just to kind of, but I, you know, anticipating that, you know, most of, most of them, you know, follow the directive of the budget message, I'm anticipating, you know, some are going to have to cut expenses to make up for contractual increases and et cetera. So we may, I guess my point is we may not fully see through their requests what the need is, but fair, fair point.
That's it, that's all I got, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Melissa?
I said two point six. Given the Powder Mill focus right now, it would be great if the town could just better publicize the ZBAA meeting on the 27th and have Town Council is going to be present to do a primer on the 40B process, so that people who are interested in understanding how that works, because I think it's very nuanced, can attend it. I think that would be great for everyone.
Agreed.
And then two, one of the executive directors of the Conquer umbrella from the Environment and Art Section had reached out to me, and I met with her today, and she was interested in helping Maynard put on and start an Earth Day celebration or tradition. And since we had tried to get that off the ground last year, I connected her today with Larry Schultz, who was the person who had come before the board last Friday to try to do it, and there wasn't a lot of town time to do it. So I just wanted, I think it would be a great thing for the town if people were behind it and getting the schools involved like was originally planned, especially if there was a nonprofit out there with some funding to help facilitate it and get the momentum going.
Didn't we start that a couple years ago with that girls' project?
That's Father's Day.
Oh, Father's Day, that's right, okay.
Wait, didn't we, didn't we guys try to do Science Day? The Science March?
Yeah, it's that. But with Honor Day.
That's his guy name, that's him though.
Same person.
So also too, yeah, a good, good person to speak to is Michelle Grenier from Conservation, because she's, she's the one that has taken ownership of the Tree City USA component, and, you know, as a conservation agent, and would be, you know, particularly if it's, if its focus is around Earth Day as opposed to like a Science Day. You know, it would definitely be something that she could collaborate on as well.
Okay, I'll let you think that, actually. Introduce them.
Great.
Any else?
That's all.
Cheryl?
Just a heads up that the Mass State's MCCPO is holding one of their courses for new members of boards. It's a free class I've registered for on the 28th of November. So it's all the state instructions about how to do it right. So I'll come back with all sorts of new knowledge for our next meeting.
Yeah.
On Tuesday.
Don't, don't fall objective.
Is that Ashford?
Yeah, it's going to be in Boston.
Just make sure you did your conference business test. All right, I have to take two, one for this and one for magic.
Same test?
Different test, no, magic is state. Magic is a state test, you have to do the state, because that would be different than municipal. A little more strict. I can barely drive home at night. What do you got, David?
Just quickly, I wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, our, my colleagues of the board, my town staff, residents of Maynard, everybody. This is probably the, I think a lot of people believe that Thanksgiving is their favorite holiday of the year for any various reasons, but it's time to reflect on what's right in the world and what's right in your life. So, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you, you too.
Same to you.
With that, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? I only did that for you guys, we never do that. All right, so we'll open the meeting at seven o'clock, and please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Appreciate it. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. First item on our agenda after the pledge of allegiance is public comments. And before we get to public comments, I have a letter from Ellen Duggan that she requested that we read into public comments, but I'm going to enter it into the record, into the minutes, as is. And I will let Ellen know that we've done that, and if she wants to come and read it or make her statement, she can, because if I start reading one, I'll be reading 20 at night. And so we're just going to enter that into the record as is, or the correspondence, and she can come and read it if she likes. So that's that one. Do we have any public comments this evening? Anyone want to make any public comments? Now's a pretty good time. Yes, sir. Ron, can you come up and let everybody know who you are, because it seems like that'll be the habit for the night? So if anybody wants to speak tonight during any part of the evening, and you're not sitting at the front table, could you come to the microphone and just tell us your name and address?
Ron, can I read a dear path? I wanted to make a comment, or it might be a suggestion, about sewers.
About what?
Sewers.
Okay.
Sanitary sewers. When we went through, when you went through the rate hearings the last two times, we talked about losses in the sewer count, and the need to raise the rates and the status of the system and so forth, and different problems. And then we all know about the $1.5 million worth of problems with pipes. At Parker Street, fortunately, we got, the town all got grant money, and that's good. There are problems, I guess, that were identified on Powder Mill Road. We had a $400,000 unplanned event a year and a half ago. We had a $200,000 unplanned event. We had a $90,000 unplanned event at the, by Jiffy Lube. So there are a lot of things going on, which sort of seem to me to be in a reactive mode. I don't mean that in any way as a criticism. So I guess what seems to be happening is when we do a development project, we survey the pipes and we find issues. So with Powder Mill Road, I don't think there's any reason to think if we camered from Middlesex Bank to Wallfame Street, we wouldn't find similar spiral fractures and cracks and all the same things. So what I guess my recommendation, as a question, is, is what, I think it would be a good idea for the town to embark upon a pretty aggressive survey of at least all the trunk lines in Maynard to try to find out the extent to which we have deteriorated pipes, the system's over 100 years old. The two major areas we surveyed both had pretty similar problems. I don't, for me, I'm not a sewer expert, but it seems to me like if the pipes are similar age and we're having those problems, that we may have a fairly extensive problem. When we look at the, the rates, and, you know, I don't want my sewer rates to go up, but it looks like they have to go up. We only have $250,000 for repairs and advancements in there, and the numbers we're seeing are far greater than that. We've exceeded them in every year. So I would recommend that the selectmen consider engaging someone to camera. Whatever the appropriate pipes are, I think a lot of the town would be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, we'll let Aaron know. Anybody else have a public comment?
Hello, everyone, Joe Graham, Dear Path. I'm using this more as a information session, just to gain a little bit more knowledge in terms of the development proposal. So my questions are more in line of the formulation of the scoping committee around the project on Powder Mill Road. So my understanding is there's two members on the scoping. Is it a committee, is it an official subcommittee, or how does that, or how is that formulated? Just in terms of working with the developer and scoping the project and understanding the assumptions and what, I guess, how is that, how has that worked out?
It worked out in a, in this meeting, in a public meeting. The developer asked if we could have Kevin, Bill Nemter, myself, not necessarily myself, but the two people that ended up being involved, and myself, and Melissa, and Jean-Pierre, and that's the group. And the discussion.
It's an unofficial subcommittee, it's a working group.
Okay, thank you. So in terms of typical process in the town, do we usually go out and have a vote, or just open forum where people can understand what's the scope, what are we trying to accomplish, understand the assumptions of what the developer is proposing? Has any of that happened?
There, he is having, he is hosting, the developer is hosting a meeting December 7th, 7 o'clock, at the library.
Yes.
So he's hosting a public information session, which is pretty common in these developments, you know, all these developments. And other than that, there's been no agreements made, no decisions made. There's just been a lot of conversation about different things that the town would, you know, like to see and what he would like to see, and it hasn't gotten to the point where we've made any decisions, nor do I believe he has.
Gotcha, okay.
The developer also hasn't submitted any kind of formal proposal yet. This is really in the inventory stage, so the town hasn't done anything. And it's very common in any project for the town to have a small working group to talk to any developer and understand the scope before it goes further, and to do studies and investigate. And then the results are always brought back to the town. The process in terms of public forums and how it proceeds is a little different in this case, because it's a 40B project, so it goes, it falls more under state law. But it couldn't go forward without a public hearing through the zoning board of appeals, no matter what, whether it's a friendly process or an unfriendly process.
Makes sense, okay. And then in terms of the process in which those meetings occurred, are there any public records of the minutes or discussions? Like, I'm trying to get at the assumptions of what was discussed, what the town, what the town will get out of it, what we'll be putting in, what will contribute. That's kind of what I'm trying to get at. Is there any documentation, or with that, is that not available based on everything that's happened since April?
So it's not, because it's not an actual subcommittee, there's no meeting, and there's no public posting. It's not open to the public. When it comes back to a larger group reporting on the information and the studies, those would have meetings, and there would be a public forum or agenda, however, the board in town decides to go about it. Is that fair?
Yeah, so, you know, there's no meeting, there's no meeting minutes to speak of, you know, in that sense. It's just, you know, as far as discussion. But any, any reports that have been conducted or are part of that process would be open to, you know, the Freedom of Information Act in our public record, once they're submitted to the town and we receive them. So, you know, specific meeting minutes, you know, aren't taken, you know, they're not part of that discussion, but a, a overview of the reports that were conducted, you know, would, would be open to, you know, public record, if requested.
Until the, until the developer officially files a plan or project, there is really, there is no, there is no project. It's, so far, it's discussion.
Sure.
So it's, so it's, he showed us in April his, their vision of what they'd like to see on their piece of property, and, you know, what, what that means to them and everything else. And so we've met with them to discuss those visions and what, you know, what the town has looked for and sought in other similar places, and what we expect, and that's where all is. But until he legally files a document telling us that he has a project, there's really not much that we as a town can do or demand.
Yeah, and that makes sense. And I think, just, I guess, last comment, when you think about next step, so if there is a public forum, I think what would be helpful is if the board would attempt to mirror up what the vision of the town is from the townsfolk, just to understand whether or not there's a master plan or not.
This is all pretty preliminary.
Sure, understood.
And, and that's, as Melissa said, that is the process.
Yep.
The idea that someone has told you guys up there that that's not the process, and that won't be the process that's followed, is a little bit ridiculous. But that is the process, and the process will be followed.
No, I understand, and I'm not suggesting that we go outside of the process. All I'm suggesting is, given that it potentially doesn't have to go out to the town to provide comment and provide input, I just highly and strongly suggest we have a forum, and it sounds like there is a forum, to just make sure we're thinking long-term in terms of what the town is envisioning versus what the developer is proposing. We just want to make those, make sure those two align.
And under state law, there has to be a public forum through the zoning board of appeals. And the studies that the developer does will be released. We just can't release them because he hasn't given them to us. So they're not public information, they're his personal property because he paid for them. So that's part of why those haven't been released. Once they're turned over to the town, under the Freedom of Information Act, we have to post those and release them, and we'll make them available to everyone. But if we don't have them, we can't release them.
Makes sense, okay.
Yeah, so it's just, it's really, really in the preliminary stages. So I think, you know, while we're in public comment, he is holding an information session on his own on December 7th at 7:00 PM at the library. Chairman DeSyl and I will be there to answer any questions from the town side, just like we're doing now, but it's his information session. So you can definitely encourage people to go and ask questions directly from the source and get information about what he envisions, and then what his timeline is for even, you know, submitting a formal lip application or proposal to the town.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Chuck Archinsky, Dear Path. I just want to make sure, I understand, that gentleman, I think, prompted you folks to answer a lot of my questions. I just want to make sure I heard one thing correctly, that before this project on Powder Mill proceeds, there will be a public hearing. Is that a guarantee?
Public discussion and a hearing if it's necessary.
There, there has to be.
If you file an unfriendly 40B, there's not necessarily going to be a hearing.
Well, even if there is, yeah. So even if it's unfriendly, I think there has to be.
It's a different type of hearing. What?
You can't make a comment like that, it's not true.
What?
You can't have a public hearing because it's not.
No, 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 no. If it's an unfriendly 40B, the hearings and the processes are completely different, is what I'm saying. So I, we intend to have as many public hearings as you guys want. But when it, when you set against the legalese of the types of projects and everything else, you can ask Ron, he's sitting with you, right? You can have, you can talk to Ron about it, Ron, can you explain to him how that works?
Well, there's always a public hearing at the ZBAA.
Yeah, but.
Even 40B, there's a required public hearing at the zoning board of appeals, either way, though.
Correct.
No other public hearing is required. If people are interested, I'm interested. They're being public hearings because the selection won't have them. They're being public hearings because the selectmen won't have them. They're not legally required in the 40B. But they are required for your, for your, for the ZVA. But as the attorney for the town mentioned a couple of months ago, by the time the 40B gets to the ZVA, it's kind of a down due because the state level doesn't approve. So it's not a law or a treaty. It won't say you can't impact it. But the attorney said-
That was my point, that there's different, different, different types of hearings.
Well, but a hearing that you can't have an impact on is kind of a hearsay.
I, I didn't create the law. That's, that's not the state level, right? So I'm, I'm just saying, there's, there's two different types of hearings. And there's hearings that we've had for, you know, 129 Parker, 129 Acton, the mill. There's been all sorts of hearings that we've had a lot more input than that hearing. And that's what I'm saying. So we, but we intend to discuss it with, you know, anybody that wants to come to a public hearing. It's, it's a different type of public hearing. It's more, more of a public discussion that we will be able to host unless they decide to do the different, a different type of project.
Well, regardless of what type of project they do, doing the right thing would be to have a public hearing.
So far, we've done the right thing. And we'll continue to do the right thing.
Okay, so-
And the suggestion that you people keep making socially in public media and through emails to all of us that we're not doing the right thing is insulting. So we will do the right thing. And when the time is right to do the right thing, that's when we'll do it. There isn't a project filed. It's, it's a vision at this point. And we just had some discussions with the guy about what he liked and what we liked. So we haven't done anything wrong. And when the time comes, we will hold the necessary public hearings.
Okay, so that, there's a guarantee there will be a public hearing before anything proceeds, regardless of what type of proposals put forward?
Correct.
So I can take your word for that?
That's the law.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. We have 10 minutes back.
Yeah, a little less.
Seven? All right, so we get two sets of minutes to accept. First set of minutes is move, the motion is move to accept and approve the minutes of the meeting November 7th, 2017, as shown. For a second. Anybody have any questions about the November 7th minutes? Okay, we're going to discuss all the things that we have. Meeting minutes of November 13th. Move that we accept and approve the meeting minutes of November 13th, 2017, as shown. Second.
I'll second it again.
Anybody have any questions that concern you about this? All right, we're going to jump to, we're going to jump to number five and do a special police officer. Anyone? Let's get, so we'll do that now. So we're going to go to number five, which is permanent special police officer. And the, the move that we approve James Benatowski to the Maine Police Department as a special officer with a term starting June 30th, 2018.
Good evening. I'm Luke, I'm Mike Noel here on behalf of the Maine Police Department. Our special police officers were down about three. James is local, born, raised. Went to school at the Yamsa. But he went to the Reserve Police Academy in Bedford and graduated this past May. He's currently taking classes at U Lowell and will be a good addition to the Maine Police Department.
Anybody have any questions for James?
Sure. James, you doing public dispatch at all as well right now?
No, I do not, sir.
No? Is that something else that's, uh?
I'm open to the idea, yeah.
Okay. I know it's been a stepping stone for quite a few, lots of candidates anyways, right?
Yeah.
Maybe something to think about.
I was recently appointed in Stowe and they actually require dispatch. So only logged four hours in Maynard. So I'm definitely open to the idea.
All right.
Anyone else? Question? All in favor of the appointment?
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You ready, James? Do you, James Benatowski solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Massachusetts and the town of Maynard? Support the laws thereof and will, to the best of your skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office's patrolman for town of Maynard according to the Constitution and laws thereof?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations, James. Come sign. You're welcome. Right on the X. Is that your address?
Uh, yes, it is.
We're all set. And then we'll get a slip and we'll send it over to Lucy. That's for your record. Oh, Lucy.
And mine.
And yours, yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. James.
So you know, my painter was talking me up all last week.
I heard.
Huh? Can you pull them up and do them again?
I don't know if you want to talk about the correspondence.
You could probably do the consent again.
Well, the town is here.
Right, you do the consent. Would you, you want to pull those out and reschedule?
Yeah.
N and O?
I think that's fair.
Which, which do we pull it up?
N and O.
N and O?
Yep. N, numbers N and O.
Okay.
Put that on for a future agenda.
We're going to move to this. We only have three minutes to do it. We'll maybe wait till the end of the night. So make a move, make a motion. We move to accept and approve the list of correspondence as shown A through M. N and O to be reset. For a second. Any discussion on the other remaining correspondence?
Just other than to say that we were notified that, that things came out well on the ambulance fees. So yay, results for correspondence G and S. Or no, E and F, right?
I forwarded that off, that off to the chief as well. And he wanted to tell me to thank the board for the support on that initiative as well.
And then, Kevin, I'd just like to say that your memorandum out with guidance to the departments, which I think is A in the correspondence. Yeah, I thought that was very, very well written and very reflective of some of the conversations that we've been having here in terms of that. So thank you for that.
Yeah, it's a, you know, trying to depict the-
The realities of our budget picture.
That was actually going to be a comment I made at selectmen's comments. Have you gotten any feedback from?
Um, no, not directly.
One department in particular?
No.
No.
Nothing. I've sent it to them, but I haven't had any communication.
All right, so 7:20. We have a legal hearing scheduled for 7:20. It's what is required. We will read the legal notice and then open the hearing. As required by- Who was in favor of the correspondence? Thank you. All right, and I will go back to reading that. As required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, the Maine Board of Selectmen will hold their annual fiscal year 2018 tax classification hearings on Tuesday, November 21st, 2017, at 7:20 PM. In the Michael J. G. News. Meeting room number 201, the Maynard Town Building. The purpose of the hearing is to determine the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real property. The public is welcome to attend. Good evening, Angie.
Good evening.
Are you alone?
No, I have some backup behind me. Quite a bit of backup behind me.
All right.
I'd just like to give us all a high.
Down near the back?
I think they have that.
I got one too.
Thank you.
Angie, had you left copies for the back for anybody in the audience?
Yep.
Thank you. Just in case anyone wants one, I have an extra one.
So I know we have two new selectmen. My name is Angie Murama. I'm your chief assessor. And every year around this time, we have this classification hearing to determine what portion of your taxes is going to be distributed to commercial, industrial, and personal property and residential. We also vote on a residential exemption and a small commercial exemption. I hope that you've gotten the packet and had an opportunity to look at it. I know there's a lot of information in there. If you have any questions, even if they come up after tonight, feel free to reach out to me. I'm more than happy to assist in that. So I usually just go through the packet. And it's kind of the same. I try to keep it the same each year because of, just so it's consistent and you know what you're looking at so you can make an educated decision tonight. So we're looking for three things. And we'll start with just, you know, the first page talks about what Maynard has. We do have, we do allow growth up to June 30th. We do run on a fiscal year quarterly. We have been, our values and our new growth has been certified by the commissioner. That's what allows us to have this meeting tonight. Page four and five is a little bit of the total process of how we come to this meeting. And there's a lot involved, many different people involved, town clerk, town accountant. And it starts in July. So right now, you'll be, not right now, but soon you'll be working on the budget for fiscal '19. And that kind of really begins the recap process. Because whatever's determined or presented at the town meeting in May is what is reflected in your tax, what you have to collect for taxes come the classification hearing. Page six is your proposition two and a half, which clearly is just what, what it, what's here is that you can only increase total value by a two and a half percent by law in Massachusetts. Then on page seven are the three exemptions that we're going to vote on tonight. I do list the single or split tax rate first, but I usually cover the residential and the small commercial because they're easier to get through than the split. And how we're going to do that, that usually takes a little more time. So I'd like to just start off with page eight with our considerations. I do like to list those out and I do like to go over those. You know, your commercial and industrial properties compared to your residential is coming down percentage-wise of value. And the reason for that are, there are property owners that are changing their zoning. 129 Acton is an example of that. It was industrial and it's now residential. They put condos there and that does occur. And therefore, your percentages of your commercial, industrial changes. And that is in here. But that is a consideration.
So Angie, just for 129 Parker Street, is just the percentage that's going to be condos changing or is the whole?
No, she meant Acton Street, actually.
Oh, okay.
Acton.
Thank you. That makes four cents.
And 129 Parker will change. So the piece that they put residential apartments on will be residential.
It'll just be that percentage?
Not commercial, right. So that's another thing that will happen. Hasn't happened yet, but that's what probably will happen. So next year, you'll see another decrease in your percentage of commercial, industrial. And what that percentage is, is that's the piece that's picking up that higher tax rate, those people. You know, how much of your commercial, industrial is big business and how much of it is small? And do the, these businesses require extraordinary municipal services like fire, police? And if we do, whatever split you do decide, does it attract businesses to our town? Will it keep businesses in our town? Those are the considerations that you should have when you're splitting this. Because even though they don't vote, they're not registered voters. A lot of businesses, they don't live here in Maynard. Some of them do, some of them don't. You still want to be considerate of keeping business because you're, if you have a good economy, you have a good town. It has a ripple effect. And then, of course, I like to put this in here because, you know, we do have a classic New England mill town. And you do want to have businesses downtown. We still have a downtown. A lot of communities don't. So page eight just gives you a few of your considerations. So I'm going to skip page nine, which this is your commercial, I mean, this is your split. And we vote on that last because there's a lot of discussion normally with that, if that's okay. So we're going to go to page 11, which is your residential exemption. Maynard's never voted in the residential exemption. They've always chosen no. And the Board of Assessors does recommend no, a no vote. We have about 15 communities in the state of Massachusetts that currently have the residential exemption. And what it does is it shifts the tax burden within the residential class of properties. That's your single family, two-family, three-family. And it's for non-owner occupied properties. And in essence, what it does is houses that are assessed average to lower get a lesser tax bill versus properties that are not owner occupied and are valued above. So your higher-end properties pay more. The other ones picking it up. So you'd have a third tax rate in your residential exemption, which really, for the town of Maynard, I just don't think we have enough of those properties to justify that exemption. Do you want to vote on these as we go through them, Chris? Or are you going to do it all at the end? I don't remember how we've done it in the past.
In the past, we've done it one at a time.
We have done it one at a time. The agenda, detailed agenda plays it out as if we go through them all, take public comment, close the hearing, and then deliberate. But it's up to the board however they want to proceed as long as they, if we do it each way, as long as you open it up to public comment prior to the votes.
Angie, where, with the residential exemption, do we have a number of properties that actually would qualify for that? And you said we don't have many, but how many do we have?
Yeah, I don't have a number for that, Terrence, because I would have to go through a lot of them. Properties are in trust. And I would have to actually get copies of those trusts to see if they're trustees and beneficiaries to determine if they are the owner. So it's not as straightforward like Terrence Donovan owns this house. A lot of apartments, which is where you would have a lot of the trust, you have to determine if, who's owner of the trusts. And if it's the people, then that would be an owner occupied, they would be okay. So a lot of research would be, would have to be done on that. And I haven't done it.
So do we have to bring this up every year?
Yes.
By law, you have to bring it every year.
If I didn't have to, it would save us a lot of time, but...
I thought it was helpful in the packet that you included the communities that do have this in place.
Yeah.
Because it underscores the type of community that are vacation homes, summer rentals, those types of properties.
Right.
Make up a significant proportion of their residential.
Like Cambridge.
Yeah.
Boston. Yeah, so. All right, so we'll just do it all at the end, Chris?
Typically, I think we've done it, done it recently one at a time.
Okay.
Kevin, it says move to vote blank to the residential exemption.
Yeah, because I wasn't going to speculate the vote.
Yes or no?
The recommendation is no.
Yes or no?
So I guess we'll put no, and since the recommendation is no, we'll put no, and then we will vote, and a yes vote is a no vote when we vote.
Public has an opportunity.
No, we didn't get to that point yet. I'm just making sure the motion is right. So you recommend no, so we will put in the motion, move to vote no to the residential exemption. And then, once they read the motion and they're seconded, we'll have public comment on it, our comments, and then when we vote, a yes vote would be a no.
Okay.
Correct.
All right? So move to vote no to the residential exemption. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Cheryl. Residential exemption is now open for discussion either by the board or anybody in public comment or have a discussion about the residential exemption. This will be the time.
I would just say, if we have to do this every year, then it may make, I mean, I remember when I was on the Board of Assessors, we didn't have the numbers either, and now it's five years later. At some point...
It's a lot of work, Terrence.
I'm not saying it's not a lot of work, Angie, but I mean, what if there's money out there that we could be...
Well, you have to look at the, the whole exemption in its entirety. It's not a question of the number of properties, it's the type. So like Cheryl just mentioned, we're not that type of community to, to consider this in that we don't have...
I understand it's philosophical, and I totally get that. What I'm saying is, we're actually voting on something, but again, we're voting on something that we don't even have the numbers behind how many properties there are. So I'm slightly uncomfortable voting either way without knowing how many properties would be affected by this. That's all I'm saying. So at what point are we going to try to make a concerted effort to get this information? I think it behooves us to, that's all.
I think if you voted yes, then we would have to go out and, and find all the numbers, which would delay our tax rate. We'd have to get the programming done to, to be able to put the tax bills out with this sort of a thing in it.
I think Terrence's point is that he's disappointed if we don't have it.
We don't have the numbers.
We looked at it.
We're being asked to vote in this direction with a recommendation from the Board of Assessors, and there's no numbers to substantiate why we're voting that way.
Okay, to clarify that, all I'm going to say is that you really don't have to have a specific number to understand whether or not that exemption is beneficial to the town of Maynard or not. A number is nice, I agree. It's a lot of work. I could look into it and see what would be involved. But the concept of that exemption for communities that have a lot of vacationers like Cambridge or Tinsbury the Cape, we don't fit that. And therefore, I feel that you do have enough information to make a very educated decision on whether or not you want that residential exemption in the town of Maynard, even though you don't have a specific count.
Okay, so that being said, my question is this, and I think we've answered it, we almost, I think we asked it almost at the beginning, but the, if, even if this has changed, it doesn't equate to any more dollars, it just shifts the burden.
That's correct.
And the dollars to the town net the same no matter what, so it's just a matter of, you know, are we going to charge one segment of property and one the other?
That's correct. If you look at page 12, I give a few examples of that. And you can see that your lower-valued home would save roughly $1,200, $1,300, where your $450,000 home would pay around $500 more a year. So you're shifting, within that class, you're not collecting any more money, you're just shifting who's going to pay it.
Playing devil's advocate, if we had a number of large apartment complexes that were going in town, imagine if that was to happen? Right? There could be, that's all I'm saying, is we should, I understand the argument, and I've actually supported you with that before, I'm just saying...
A couple versus many is...
If they weren't owner occupied, but the conditions are...
Yeah, they weren't owner occupied, which most of them weren't. So I'm just saying, it would, it would behoove us to do some due diligence here, instead of just assuming every year that it's not, it's not worth it. That's all. As someone who has to actually sign his name to something for the public, I would prefer that, that's all.
Okay.
So I guess, I guess, you know, follow up on Terrence's devil's advocate. When we get to a point where we're at a, when we get to a point where we're in a situation, if we were ever in a situation where that, that type of situation existed, would we then be able to expect, you know, some sort of numbers that would show us?
Of course.
You know, you know what I'm saying?
Of course.
So when we get to that point, you know, I think we might all agree, you know, I understand Terrence's question, but I think we all want to agree that Maynard is not, you know, you can't compare Maynard to the 15 towns, listed for a lot of various reasons. But if we get to a position where there is a, you know, a, you know, a 129 Parker Street and that place is robust and those things are happening, and that, you know, the mill will ever add a residential component and any other potential, you know, power mill or any of them, you know, we would, you know, maybe then it would make sense to suggest a yes, but if we ever get to that point, we would, you know, we'd strongly recommend it, we would have the numbers so we could make that educated decision.
I agree. So...
Okay, so Bill.
I'll make note of that.
Thanks.
Yeah, Bill Cranshaw, Mockingbird Lane. Thanks for pointing out that this is really just a shift in who pays, it's not additional money coming to the town. One thing that might help you understand is, when you consider that, you know, apartment buildings would take the shift from single-family homes. And we have in town, I don't know, maybe 35 pushing 40% of people rent in this town. So you can think that, you know, that third of the town would end up paying extra for every dollar that you reduce on, say, my house. So it would, it would, since we're not a vacation rental town, the shift is really to the apartment buildings and the people are paying rent. So all those renters are going to end up having to pay more money if this shift decreases my tax bill.
My name is Jim Fulton. I just have a, a small point to make on this. As we all understand right now, we have a split tax rate in existence for the retail commercial sector. And many of us believe that that has an impact on the marketability of the retail commercial properties, particularly downtown, relative to the, the occupancy and the success of the businesses. I think that this, this concept presents a moral hazard because really what it's proposing is, is the shifting of the tax burden from one particular sector onto another who may not have a, a voice. So if we're talking specifically about, on apartment buildings, you're talking about shifting that tax burden to someone who's not here to vote on it, doesn't really have a say in the function of the government, other than the ability to transfer that expense directly back to the tenant. So I, I think that that is something that, that you really ought to give serious consideration to moving forward, relative to, you know, our experience with the, with the split tax rate for the businesses. What is happening with the split tax rate is, is that we're in a situation now where it's extremely difficult to fix that. If we make a decision that we want to equalize that, that rate, so that it's a benefit for businesses to bring them into town, it means shifting that tax burden back onto the very people that this, this proposal here is, is advocating, okay? So it would be, be more of a burden in that instance on, on the residential. So I would avoid this at, at all costs. I don't disagree with Mr. Donovan on having the factual material here. I think that would be helpful, but, you know, even in that instance, I agree with the assessor that, that we should, we should reject this, okay?
Anybody else want to speak about the residential exemption? Anybody here have a question or comments other than those made? All right, so, the motion is made, a yes vote is probably no to the residential exemption. So, all those in favor?
Okay. All right, other exemption is the small commercial exemption, which I described on page 13 and 14.
Okay, so I'm going to do the same thing I did with the last one. I'm going to move to vote no, because that's your recommendation. Move to vote no to the small commercial exemption. Do we have a second? Cheryl, second again. And again, when we vote yes, it's your no recommendation.
So basically, this is another shift in the tax rate to your commercial and industrial, not your personal property. And what it does is, I receive a list from the Division of Unemployment, and they list out businesses that have 10 or less people working for them. The value of the property in question has to be a million dollars or less. And every occupant of that building has to be on the list in order to qualify for the small commercial exemption. So on page 14, I do do the work on this one. So we had a total of 15 parcels this year that qualified for this exemption. And I would just like to point out, there are only 11 communities in the state of Massachusetts, so out of 351 communities, only 11 of them use this exemption. And there are concerns in that it's not, the exemption, the way it's set up, isn't reaching the people that it was intended to reach. And that being, if the, if there is a building, because we go by ownership of land and building, and their business is qualified, but they don't own the building, it's the landlord that gets the benefit, not the tenant. And there is no law that says he has to or she has to give that benefit to the tenant, which is, who we really are trying to help is the business, not the owner of the real estate. So this is one of those exemptions that, yes, we do have to vote on it every year. Maynard has never voted yes on this. The board continues to recommend no on this exemption. We already have a shift in the commercial industrial properties. And this would just be more of a burden on companies that are in town, that we want to keep in town. So the board recommends a no vote, well, it would be a yes, a no vote for the exemption. Right, okay.
We worry about the yes, we worry about the no.
A no vote for the exemption.
Don't confuse us all.
I'm sorry. I don't want to get confused.
There's only one Dunkin' Donuts in town. So, anyway, so, do you want anything else to add?
I just want to add that out of the 15, only eight are owner occupied. So you're really talking about eight, not all 15? I mean, all 15 would get it if it was voted in. But only eight of them would actually be the business that's getting it, not the owner of the property.
Okay, so, to finish the last, is anybody that has any public comments they'd like to make about the small commercial exemption?
Hi, Bill Cranshaw. I guess my comment is, what the heck, why not? There's eight small businesses that might benefit a little bit by this, and there's seven others who, you know, a couple of their tenants might have triple-net leases, they might benefit too. But it's small money, it's a few thousand dollars, why not give those small business owners a chance? If they want to do the paperwork, let them take advantage of it. Most of them probably won't, but why not give them a chance? Thanks.
I have to say, I agree with Bill, and I don't think it's a huge burden on the town in any way. I think very few fall under it, and I think if I really try to encourage economic development in town and bring new businesses in, the small exemption might be a way to attract people.
No.
No, not at all?
Well, you're, what you're doing is, there's businesses that would benefit, are owner occupied businesses? So like the residential exemption, most businesses that are coming in are renting, they don't own the property?
But we have a lot of commercial property for stealing them.
So it deters them, it deters more than it does encourage.
How about relative?
Because you have so many, such a few amount. So if you look at page 14, you can see the businesses that, in other words, I just randomly picked the tax impact.
Yeah.
If you look at page 14, I randomly picked several properties to show with a split or without a split. It says tax impact with the 1.33, I use that because that is the current split that we have. You can see that most businesses are going to pick up between $70 to $3,000 additional tax versus the eight that are going to save probably, you know, between, I don't know, 760 to maybe 1,300. So most businesses that are coming in aren't buying the building. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. They're renting. They rent the space. And most of your renters don't benefit from this exemption. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. So yes, it would benefit some, but I don't think that it would be an attracting exemption to have for attracting new business to come to town.
We do have a lot of commercial property on the market right now, and a lot of the buildings have been condoed too, so I assume that...
So they're renters, though. See, what I'm saying is those businesses that would come in and, I mean, maybe they're going to buy a condo. We don't have that many commercial condos, but it's possible. So yes, it might benefit some. I'm not saying it wouldn't benefit any, Melissa, it's just, it's another burden to your commercial businesses in town making for a few eight.
I also find it indicative that we find, you know, as you mentioned in the briefing documents on page 13, that there are a number of communities that went down the path of putting this in place that have subsequently rolled it back. I mean, to me, it kind of echoes the previous comment that was made in public session about, you know, challenges that we already have with our existing split tax rate between residential and commercial, perceived as a disincentive for the type of commercial investments that we might like to see. So I see this as a further potential disincentive of a complexity of a tax structure for commercial investors at scale.
Angie, Bill commented on folks with triple-net leases. What's your reaction to this?
I haven't, I don't have access to that information, so I wouldn't know how many. I don't think legally I can get that information from people. And I think that's one of...
I guess the point is, would it typically affect those types of businesses? Would they see the reduction in their rent as a result of the small business? Because if it's, if, if the owner gets that tax reduction and it's a lease, and it's a triple-net lease, perhaps they do see...
Perhaps is a good question. And that would be it. There is nothing that I could enforce or the town could enforce. So would they benefit if they had a triple lea, I don't really, we wouldn't be able, I don't know.
We'd still have any owner occupied, though, right?
You go to the owner.
So if you're owner occupied, it still has to be, you know, something that the owners willing to share and want there. I think, you know, Cheryl hit on it, and the gentleman that spoke during the last section spoken a little bit, it's, it's a perception. I don't think that the, you know, to Bill's point as well, it's a small dollar amount, but it's, you know, maybe it's not small dollars to some people. To some people, three or $4,000 isn't often a small number. But it's a perception, and the perception is that we're not real business friendly based on our current split and the split rate, and also just, you know, some of the things that we insist upon out of our business partners in town. And if we just, we add another, we add another negative to coming into Maynard to do business, regardless of whether you want the eight or the 15 or some number that's not known yet, I think it's just another hurdle to get in, to get into town. And I don't think that we should be putting hurdles in front of people that want to come into town to do, to do the business.
And I, I don't dispute that. The, one thing I do want to, and I'm not advocating that we vote, that we vote in favor, I just want to educate myself and the residents, because you recall, just two years ago at town meeting, there was, there was a, a citizens petition that went before town meeting with the, it was somewhat non-binding, I guess, but it was instructive to the Board of Selectmen to adopt this. And the vote was exactly tied. So the residents, upon hearing the argument, when the residents of the community heard it, it was not necessarily a slam dunk. So it was something that the town, I think, had a good discussion that evening about what they, you know, what they thought we should do. And their instruction, their instruction to us was a flat-out tie.
No, I don't think it went to a vote, it was pulled.
They voted it down.
It wasn't a vote, it was a tie?
It didn't get voted to be, to be added, it was a written.
No, that was Vic's, and Vic went up and presented it and everything else.
Yeah, I thought, I thought the vote was against, I don't recall.
It was a negative vote, we were just voting down.
Yeah, because it tied, that's why. It was a complete, it was a flat-out tie.
I thought he had to pull it because of, there was some reason that he had to pull it.
Never pulled, it was, it was heard and it was a tie.
I don't recall that it was a tie.
Absolutely was.
I can look into that.
It was.
We're not going to argue about whether it was a tie or not. Anybody else have any public comments about this exemption? Or lack of exemption? Anybody up here have any comments about it? All right, so I guess if there's no more comments, we'll vote. A yes vote is a no vote on the next, so all is in favor of a no vote. All is in favor of a no, a yes vote. Okay.
Okay, so now we're going to just go back to.
For the split, are there only the two pages, nine and ten?
Lots of them go.
No.
Page thirty.
It's from, yeah.
What page does you, the backup for that start?
The backup for that starts on page fifteen.
Okay, all right.
So now we're talking about our, we have two tax rates in the town currently.
Do the same thing again.
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry.
No, wait. It's different, because it's not a yes or a no, right?
Right, it's not a yes or no.
All right, so we'll.
You're going to actually vote on a percentage tonight for this. So I don't know if we have to fix the motion or whatever.
Well, I can, I can do a move to approve the CIP and residential factor, tax rates with a percentage of shift of an unknown number. Move to close, so an unknown number just has the motion, so.
We'll just make the motion when we know what it was going to be.
We get to that point, yeah. Okay, so.
Okay.
I'll second it. Or an unknown number.
How much?
Motion to second the unknown number.
Yeah.
Ready? Okay, so basically, what I'm telling you on page nine is the amount that we can shift based on the minimum residential factor, which is a hundred and fifty percent, 1.5 percent. And I show you that on page ten. That sheet comes directly from Gateway, and it allows us to shift up to 1.5 percent.
I don't know what Gateway is.
Gateway is the software that we use through the Department of Revenue site to calculate our tax rate. And then if you go to page fifteen, that's our levy. Basically, this is telling you how much you can collect through taxation. You have your growth in there, and you have your debt exclusion, and it tells you what you can collect through real estate tax.
I've got a question on that, if I may. The new growth number of 43968. Now, you mentioned at the outset that, you know, this, the split that we're talking about this evening is based upon the Warren article that was approved at town meeting in May relative to the overall budget. So the budget was set in May, and this is affecting, correct me if I'm wrong with this, with this description. And when we set the budget, the new, the new growth number was set at, I believe, Kevin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, at three hundred and fifty thousand.
Three fifty, yeah.
For new growth. So this year, we happened to recognize that we recovered more new growth than was anticipated in the balanced budget that we proposed to town meeting back in May. So my question is, why would we allow ourselves to increase our limit above what our balanced budget already is? In other words, shouldn't that number be three fifty, and then that lowers by eighty thousand dollars or so the amount that we tax?
Growth is growth, Dave, you don't control it like that. We go by permits.
Our budget is balanced, correct?
Yes, but when you're calculating your tax rate and you're putting in the growth number, the growth number is a separate calculation based on permitting and new things, and you can't cut it off and say.
I guess my question is, are we obligated to put a number in there higher than three hundred and fifty thousand that was put in last year's budget?
You're obligated to put in there the certified growth amount that is submitted through Gateway.
So that four thirty.
Through the LA thirteen, what you decide to do with that growth is different.
So, Beth, I could just interject. If you look at the top portion for FY seventeen.
Yeah.
We also use three fifty, but we put in two, because that was the actual certified new growth for FY seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
So was three fifty an estimate at the time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go, so it was an estimate.
It's estimate.
But I guess the point then is, suppose we were in, I'm trying to educate myself here. Suppose next year, we put in a, an estimated, I don't know what the number was, that Kevin's prepared to put for FY nineteen, I assume it's three fifty again. And suppose something happens that the new growth comes in and it's a million bucks. According to what Angie's saying, growth is growth, so a million bucks goes in, and then we tax the residents another million, another six hundred thousand dollars just because the new growth was that much higher? So what's the difference here with eighty thousand versus a milli, you know?
I thought Angie was just saying, we have to acknowledge that that's the growth, and then what we do with it is up to us.
Right, so that's the point. We could theoretically say, we're not going to tax that eighty thousand dollars, we're going to take that off of the people's tax bill.
That's right.
Yeah, you did do that one.
And why don't we do that rather than always increasing, increasing, increasing?
Well, we could theoretically not go up two and a half percent every year either.
You don't have to go that way.
That's what I'm saying, so.
Correct, but I'm not arguing that point, I'm arguing on the new growth.
We could take the position for the FY nineteen budget, which is, you know, levy plus two and a half percent plus new growth. You could not add new growth, you could take a lesser portion of new growth, which would, which would.
I guess I'm saying, why tax to the max, just because the new growth happened to be good, more than, more than we projected? Why not give the residents a break?
You always have the option later on to decide that you want to reduce the tax rate, okay? But the, this is just the number that's set such that you can't exceed this, this amount. What you're saying is you're going to set a, a lower amount for next year on what you could potentially bring in. And if you've gotten a tough spot and you needed that extra money for some emergency or something like that, you would, you would have to do an override in order to get that money back.
Actually, part of what you're saying, Dave, we did this year, if you looked at the page, it says excess levy.
Yeah.
I think it's what, like sixty thousand, whatever that number is. So what we effectively did is we did not use all that new growth to tax to the limit. We basically said, let it flow through and it helped reduce the tax.
And that's what I'm hoping to do again this year, at least get the discussion.
That's an issue for going forward, because that, that's assuming your scenario came true, then this boy would have to make a decision what to do with it. You know, whether you want to use it, you know, tax to the limit, or you want to use part of it to, you know, reduce the tax rate, you know, that's a decision going forward. It's going to have to really cope with, especially as, you know, especially with 129 on Barca.
So the point is, we did it last year.
I think it was last year.
Whenever year it was. So we can do it, and lower that number to three fifty and have the number that we have to, the maximum allowable levy theoretically could be, what, eighty thousand dollars less.
Which this isn't the time to do that, however.
Yeah, you can do it at special town meeting if you want.
You would, you would make that decision before we get to the classification hearing. Because with the classification hearing, you're ready to submit for your tax rate. Everything is very time-sensitive. So if you decide to change all the numbers today, that would not give you enough time to get certified through the Department of Revenue and get tax bills out on time, which is not something you would want to do. So in the future, like you did that year that we did do it, it was voted, I think, at the February Selectments meeting, that you would leave any extra growth on the table. That's what you would do. You would vote on that at an earlier date, so that when we come to this meeting, we know that we're going to do that.
Although, Andy, just so people here understand too, I think when you're talking about doing that and you divide it up by households, you're talking a very negligible amount of money to begin with, like not hundreds of dollars, like ten or twenty dollars.
No.
So just so people understand that that's not going to have the impact that's going to save us, like our tax rate is, what people would be taxed, it's not going to solve our problems.
Yeah, if your tax bills are late, you could spend that, end up spending that eighty thousand dollars on interest that, you don't want to go there.
Well, it is something that you can do, if that's something you want to do. I'm just saying, you want to do it ahead of time before we have the classification hearing.
And you can still do it at, at special town meeting in the middle of the year.
Page sixteen is just the history of our levy amounts to be collected. So we'll look at eighteen. So the total amount to be raised this year is forty-nine million, two forty-three, eight ten. We're going to raise thirty million, three seventy-one, four ninety-three through real estate taxes, and then eighteen million, eight seventy-two, three seventeen through other sources like motor vehicle excise tax and fees that we charge and things like that. The graph shows you that most of our tax revenue that we get is coming from real estate taxes, which, I mean, yeah. Without saying the word Cheryl, I mean, Melissa, that was a good expression. Yeah, that's where it's coming from. Page seventeen is our debt, that's our excluded debt, that this sheet, page seventeen is from Gateway, that's what is submitted to the Department of Revenue. On page eighteen, I've just done a little bit of history of our debt, excluded debt, and just a few things that have been added through the years that people have wanted to see. Of the excluded debt, we are coming down quite a bit, we're at two, roughly two point four million. Of that, one point eight is for the school, and about six hundred thousand is for other departments. That's also part of the levy, what we can collect or not collect. Page nineteen is your growth, that's the LA thirteen, that is the sheet that's submitted through the Department of Revenue, Gateway.
Angie, can I ask you to just go back quickly, and I might just be misreading this. Page seventeen, the first line with library, and I see FY twenty-eighteen, net excluded debt service, does that mean the library's paid off?
That particular loan, yes.
No, we refunded that.
Oh, sorry.
And we refinanced it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So that, so that particular, as Angie just said, that particular loan is gone, or that particular.
It was rolled into, I guess, to something else, they refinanced.
Does that mean that the one that's at the bottom, library?
Current ref.
Current ref or cur ref is the current?
Correct.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
So I guess we are still paying for the library?
Yeah. I always get frustrated, and this is an aside, at the third line down, school boilers, we're paying for boilers that, in a school, for a school that doesn't exist anymore.
I know, we don't like to bring that up, Dave.
I know, but every year I get.
School.
The high school.
Little by the middle, yeah.
We were told they would be used again, no question, they'd be used in the middle school.
Using scrap metal heat, that's what we use.
They're sitting somewhere.
We could use your eighty thousand and just pay it off, though.
For this?
Angie, Gateway is just a software program that we plug our own numbers into?
Yeah, it's a software program written by the Department of Revenue for submitting your recap.
But it's, you know, it's purely out of numbers.
Yes, yeah, I enter, well, I'm not the only one that enters into it, everybody does.
But it's, it's a software program that we enter our numbers in, and this will give us that information.
And then we hit submit at the bottom, and the DOR says, yeah, you're good, and no, you're not.
But a lot of the numbers are certified by the state.
Right.
Okay, so page twenty, it's just showing you growth valuation, new growth valuation. And you can see that seventy-four percent of it came from residential. We had a lot of condos, we added a lot of condos to our base this year. You know, our commercial and industrial is, is small, our personal property, I don't know why that went up so much. That's just us doing our form of list every year and picking up small businesses.
Personal property excise too?
No.
No, separately.
That's just us.
What's excise you just, no?
No, this is, no, this is.
You go.
Yeah.
Cheryl, can Cheryl answer that question?
What? No, she wouldn't, no.
No?
No. Cheryl doesn't do valuation.
You know if we got more, more people paying their personal property tax bills this past year?
It's me, it's more counts being added.
But it have, just because you're adding doesn't mean people are paying them.
No, you're right.
Yeah.
That's a whole separate, that's a whole separate.
The check would come into Cheryl's office, that's why I'm asking you, do we get more checks for personal property this past year? That's why the number might be up.
We're charging more people, but are they paying? We don't, I don't know that. Two separate things. Page twenty-one is tax dollar amounts. So you can see like, so your personal property is a hundred and seven thousand that has been billed, not necessarily paid, for growth. So personal property did good, that's because we do send out form of list, I do almost three hundred and fifty of those every year, my office does that. And also, the residential growth was so high because of our condominiums. They were all selling at a very high, they had a high value, so the tax dollar amount for those came in high. And that's part of the increase in our growth, Dave, is that we had all these condos that we added, you know, Trail View came, the one on 129 Acton, we had a lot of those that came that he finished. So anyways. Page twenty-two gives you a history of our tax rates. So the first one is just a tax rate history, you know, so our current tax rate is twenty-two oh one for residential, and thirty dollars and fifty-seven cents for commercial, industrial, and personal property. The middle of the page is the, the history of what we voted to shift. So the first column is your percent of commercial and industrial, percent of value, of total value. So you can, as you can see, your, your commercial entities, it's coming down. And we've stayed at 1.33 for the last three years in a row. Before that, it was three seven, three nine, and we are coming down. You know, ten years ago, it was 1.57, today it's, well, we don't know what it's going to be today, but last year it was 1.33. And then just the bottom just shows what, how many communities have a split rate. And for seventeen, we don't know eighteen yet, for seventeen, it was a hundred and eleven. And then this is, page twenty-three is just a picture of other communities that are close to us. This is something that was added a few years ago, someone wanted to know how we compared to our neighbors. So your dark blue is the communities with a split rate, and your light blue are your single-rate towns. So most of them are single. That just gives you a little idea of your neighbors. Then page twenty-four is your LA four, which is your current valuation, current parcel Page twenty-five is the percentage of CIP. So we went up, total value, we went up seventy-four percent, went seventy-four percent, so we added a lot. So as far as value and the value of our properties, Maynard is doing very well. Values are going up, properties are selling quickly. Properties are selling quickly. They're not staying on the market a long time, which is signs of good, good, good things. That's very good. We want that. Page twenty-six is just a comparison of values. Parcel count is the top, and then the bottom is just a comparison from last year to this year of valuation. You can see your condominiums, we went up eight point five percent. You know, I see a huge increase coming for next year as well. So people are building and people are moving into town. That's a very good thing for us. Page twenty-seven is your average single family. That's usually what everyone likes to look at because they can relate to it, because they have a single-family house in Maynard. So the value, the average single-family house is going up a little bit. Our taxes do go up quite a bit each year, but I don't think that's unique to Maynard. So last year, the average single-family tax bill went up two hundred and forty-nine dollars. The average tax bill last year was seven thousand two hundred and nine dollars. We don't know what eighteen's gonna be until we decide to vote on what we vote. So then page twenty-eight and twenty-nine, that also comes from Gateway, and those are all your options, each one, one to one fifty. And what the board does is, on page thirty, we pick seven or eight, let me see, we got eight options from those hundred and fifty. And usually, that's what we focus on because that's kinda where we're at. This year, after our meeting, the board and myself is recommending a one point three two shift in the tax rate. I've highlighted that in blue on page thirty. The difference between the one point three three and the one point three two is three cents per thousand. So if you go with the one point three three, which is what we had last year, the residential tax rate would be twenty-two sixty-one. And if you go with the one point three two, which is what we're recommending, it would be twenty-two sixty-four. So it's not a huge change, but I just would like to read that the Board of Assessors and your chief assessor recommend a one point three two split for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen tax rate. Collectively, we believe that building a strong commercial and industrial base is critical to the long-term financial health of Maynard. And that the one point three two split provides a small incremental incentive for businesses to come to Maynard while not significantly affecting our residential property owners. And then the last two pages is just a glossary of terms, which I put in there. No, not really.
Check. Does anybody have any trouble comments about the suggestions and the information provided so far?
My name is Malcolm Sim. I'm the owner of Jam Time. It's a small business in Maynard. But we rent in a large commercial building, so that means we have triple net. So even though we're a small business, we would like the commercial rate to go down just because it helps our business and trying to help your community, because people are moving in and they're gonna need activities. So small businesses do appreciate lower commercial rates, because we directly pay that, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could. Angie, on page twenty-five of the packet, can you explain, I know we've lost some commercial or industrial property, but most of what we've lost has been really just land value, nothing that's been developed like one twenty-nine Acton. In fiscal year sixteen versus fiscal year eighteen, how come the values have decreased so much? So the industrial value has gone down ten point one million. And the commercial value has gone down one point nine million.
Because I think that was the year that we took down, I took out all the buildings that were on one twenty-nine Parker Street. There was three buildings there, and they tore all those buildings down. It's not just parcels changing their use. It's also building permits and what's being done. Like, the mill's value came down this year because they tore down two buildings. So even though they've added infrastructure and all of that,
Yeah.
the value still comes down because, so I mean, I could go back and...
Ten million dollars, though, I mean, sixteen, I mean, those buildings were torn down in thirteen prior to, I mean...
I don't, I don't know.
I know, I mean, their tax bill was like around eighty-six thousand dollars after the buildings came down. But just in that two-year period, on the industrial values of, you know, ten point one million is significant. You know, in a total of forty-six or fifty million. And also on the commercial side, almost two million in a two-year period. I'm just saying, where is the value? I don't know if there was anything that stuck out.
On page twenty-five, Kevin?
Yeah.
So the industrial value...
So I feel like at twenty sixteen fiscal year versus eighteen, on the commercial side, that drop in value is one point nine million.
From sixteen to eighteen. Well, I could go back and look. I mean, I don't know off the top of my head because there's a lot of activity in town. I could look into, I do keep all those records and see what we changed.
I mean, really, it's the resident, the last two years, it's the residential values that have kept us in the positive.
Yeah.
You know, where we saw an eight point six percent in sixteen, which had a significant commercial-industrial piece. I just wonder, you know, to lose eleven million dollars in commercial-industrial value in the course of two fiscal years is a lot. That's what I'm trying to figure out where that value is.
Well, I'm sure that there's specific reasons for that.
Yeah.
I just don't know, but I can go back and see what we changed in the property record cards and what permits were pulled and
Okay.
come up with some answers for you.
So you're in?
Do you use the mill in particular? And how they had taken some things down, and they're changing their infrastructure and everything down. They're changing all those things to reach what their vision was when they came a few years ago as Mill and Main, the first, the first pass-through with the first group, the Theresen.
Yeah.
So the, you know, the basis for all their wants and needs in town is that they're gonna do these things to increase the value of their property. So they're doing all these things to increase the value of their property, to make it more valuable to them as a business owner, a, you know, developer. Why are we, why are we now, as a community, seeing such a great deduction in those numbers? Like, if they tear down a building and tell the four of us and five of us...
The time period, Chris.
No, but what I'm saying is, follow me.
It will go up. It will go up.
I'm not worried about time, because...
Well, it's the timing. We go by building permits. We're a year behind. So right now, the value's down, but as they build and reconstruct and do everything that their vision, it will go up.
So here's, here's my point. They're gonna renovate some buildings. They're gonna do some stuff, some, you know, material work and do some of those types of things. But all this groundwork that, you know, no longer has a building two or building three, whatever the numbers of the buildings are that they knocked down, the whole discussion surrounding the removal of those properties and those buildings from the site is to grow the value. And I'm saying, you know, just because, that's their decision. They've decided that that's gonna be, make their property more valuable. They were checking less, and their tax value was down, and they're, but the whole goal, and the whole stated goal was to increase that very same value. It's a little bit counterintuitive for them to sit here before me and the rest of us in the town and say, we got this project going on, we're gonna put a walkway across the pond so you can go to the brewer, you know, when that's out. But they have all these different things, and every one of them is made, and every one of them is made with a stated goal to increase their value of their piece of property. And, you know, when they, now they're in the middle of doing it, to see it drop so precipitously...
That's the point, though, Chris. They're in the middle of doing it.
I understand.
So the value is going to fluctuate while they're doing it, just like a new house. When someone buys a piece of land and they decide they're gonna build a new house, that value's low. Sometimes they re-gut it. It's low, but as, once it's completed, it's higher than it was before they even started. It's the process. It takes time for our records, the assessors' records, to reflect that value. We can't just...
So if they don't put, my guess, the question goes, if we're measuring on buildings only, we're talking about buildings, because that's what you're focused on. I'm not focused on buildings.
Land, too, everything.
I'm focused on the project. So you're telling me that if they don't put another building up, and they just play with what they have, you know, inside and do some renovation, that when we next go out to assess that property, we're gonna assess the value of cobblestone sidewalks versus a dirt path as it is today?
No, that's not how assessing works.
But what I'm saying is, the question for the town, and from the town...
It's a market value, so...
The question from the town has to be, not, I don't care about the buildings. I care about the total dollars of that piece of property.
Me, too.
And what I'm saying is, they've told us that by us putting in new sidewalks, a new, a new veranda, you know, a walk, any area to walk in.
I'm agreeing with you.
So when does that go up? And what I'm saying, so we'll see that reflected if they don't have another building.
Correct.
Okay? And all they do is ground improvements. We're still gonna see that property value climb.
Yes, you will. Because when the project is right now, it's dirt. But when the project is completed, any project, let's not just single out the mill, but any project...
Well, you can, you can single out the mill today because Jurassic Park's hasn't been touched. So we can single out the mill, because that's the project we're talking about, and that's the project that you identified as the one that most likely was the culprit.
Well, I'm saying it's one of.
Yeah.
That was an example of how value goes down in the midst of a project. So to answer your question, Chris, yes, we will see an increase in value at nine Main and Mill when they have completed each stage of the project that they're working on. Assessors can go up to June thirtieth to pick up any new growth, and we do go out quite actively all summer long, collecting that data. And whatever is improved or added to that parcel along the way will get added in. We are behind. So just like with sales, we're behind. We're not a hundred percent current.
Do we need more help?
We always need more help, but...
No, I'm asking a serious question.
No, I think that it's being... No, 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 it's not...
There's a lagging indicator.
Right. We're not behind because we don't have the manpower to do it. We're behind because that's the timing. We're a quarterly town. We can only go up to June thirtieth. It's the timing, just like sales. We used two thousand and sixteen sales for fiscal eighteen. It's, that's the law. That's the way it works. It's not because of manpower.
I got a question. It's somewhat to Chris's point.
I guess I could use Simone.
You had said earlier that you utilize building permits as a method upon which you make determination. But how about land improvements that don't require building permits?
Like what?
Like digging up the, I don't know, does...
Oh, infrastructure? Yeah, no.
No, if somebody wants to put walkways in, you know how what the mill's doing now, they've dug up in every place.
Yeah, we don't tag, we don't assess...
Including sidewalks and everything else.
Well, I should say, how that would get picked up, Dave, is through the market. So if you have a piece of property that has dirt for walkways versus a property that has beautiful landscaping and, you know, fancy walkways, the market's going to...
People are gonna be willing to pay more.
Pay more for that. So yes, we pick it up, but do I have a specific line on my property record card that says sidewalks? No. But it gets picked up through sales, through value, through market value. So yes, we do pick that up. It is part of...
But it's not because they put in grass instead of where it used to be, you know, a parking lot. That in and of itself does not get reflected in the value of the property. It's not until we see that people are willing to pay more to go there.
Correct, through your sales.
Okay.
Angela, then, I mean, just to kind of pull this forward, so like, an example, like nine Mill and Main, right? Where you're having actual physical structures that are being taken down, and you're not gonna be adding in the current foreseeable plan, new physical structures of additional square footage. It's, you're purely reliant on market valuation to recoup the gap, that delta that's created by the removal of the physical structures.
Correct, and other improvements that may occur.
Associated improvements. And then if you switch gears, you can look at a project like Parker Street project. We have a gap because now they've removed, you know, they've demolished, or as they demolish structures, there's now not structures there, but we do at least have a bit more of a easily crystallized vision of what future structures will look like. That ends up looking perhaps a little bit more like a, not even one to one, but a one and a half to one replacement. So it's a little, I mean, there are two kind of different models that happen when we're looking at the commercial and the industrial valuations.
That is correct.
Okay.
Angie, I just have a question about the one point three two, just being connected to the business community. Why is that the sweet spot in your recommendation for the Board of Assessors? Why not one point three one? Why not stay at the one point three three? Like, what drove you to that number?
We felt that it was, had a minimal effect on the residents. And yet, it's giving the commercial, industrial, and personal property a small break as well. It's moving in the right direction. I think as you go to those lower splits, I think the board, if I can speak for the board, and myself, that you don't wanna, we don't want to, I don't know how to say this, but we don't want the tax bill to be that affected by doing that. And if we take small increments each year to get it down, it's easier on the taxpayer, especially the residential taxpayer, to bear that burden than to, you know, like, you could vote to split, you could vote a single rate tonight, if you wanted to. But the burden on your residents, residential's, property owners would be significant. So it's keeping that, trying to find that fine line of lowering it for the commercial, increasing the residential, but not enough to really hurt them.
Correct. Because I just look at from one point three two to one point three one, it's only another two cents, right? So it's none.
Another, which that would be five cents, so I...
But six dollars more on the average, six, almost six and a half dollars more to the average tax bill, right?
Yeah, roughly, yes.
Two thirty-one fourteen to two thirty-seven.
You gotta realize, too, you voted in an increase in water, too, so...
Yeah.
You know, and as...
I'll forward you out emails.
So you're gonna take all of that, we take all of that into consideration, you know.
This is also...
Water and sewer rates into consideration for tax.
The increase in what people pay to live here in Maynard. Yes, we consider all of it.
I assume you just changed seats.
I have one other question, Chris, I'm waiting patiently. So Karen, you had made a statement about the buildings coming down back in twenty thirteen, right? Up in that one twenty-nine park somewhere.
Yeah, I think it was around there.
So I'm assuming the seven point four million dollar jump from twenty thirteen to twenty fourteen would account for the destruction of those buildings, that they stopped paying market value of those properties, right? Went down, went down seven point four million, right? So, and what we're saying is the six million dollar jump from last year to this year is because Mill and Main dropped two small buildings in the front of their place?
It only accounted for like one or thirty-five thousand square feet out of one point one million.
So I'm just saying, that's a big number right there.
Yeah, I know. I don't have the specifics. I do, I did over, I did about four hundred and fifty inspections this year, so I don't have the specifics. But it's all calculated in there. I could go back and take a look and pull out all my industrial changes. Just so you know, all of this data does get submitted to the DOR. They do review it. We did get certification on valuation. We did get certification on growth, so it's not like there's something wrong.
I'm just trying to figure out why we're reading six million dollars, you know, which is what we're doing.
It's changes in what's going on out there. It's permitting, it's...
I know, but I'd like, again, I'd like to see where the six, it's not six hundred thousand dollars, it's six million dollars. Like, what changed in the town that I will drive around every day, that we lose six million dollars in industrial revenue for tax? That's, that's just tough to swallow without any data behind it.
I can go through all the permits and pull out a list.
It's not just one thing. It's a combination of a lot of things.
Okay, what's the combination, Steve?
Yep.
We don't know. I don't know that off the top of my head.
These are the questions that we, I mean, I'll speak for myself right now. We're trying to, you're trying to persuade us to do a shift in the tax rate right now.
Hold on.
Oh, no, no, let me finish. You're trying to persuade us to make a shift in the tax rate. All I'm asking for is specific numbers... All I'm asking for is specific numbers. There's two areas you, you recommended strongly for us to vote for, all right? In both times that you asked us to vote for, you don't have numbers backing up two of the biggest questions.
Hold on. You have your chief assessor, who's been doing this for 20-something years, hold on, let me speak, so you wanted, hold on.
Oh, hold on, no, Angie...
Wait a minute, Terrence.
Mr. Chairman.
The numbers that are...
Point of order for a second, please?
Wait a minute.
Point of order for a second, please? I haven't done, I haven't, I haven't finished my point. Don't get defensive about it, I'm asking you a question.
I'm not, I just want you to know where those numbers, to have confidence in where those numbers came from. Granted, you don't have the specific, Terrence, but I'm presenting that number to you with backup. If you wanna see the backup, I can provide it.
That's what I wanna see, I wanna see.
But it's not something that you need to see each individual building permit and where all those changes came from. The information that I'm giving you, you should have good enough faith to say that is a valid number, it has dropped, and now we're voting on a tax split.
I'm sorry, I, I understand what you're saying.
I never had to give that kind of detail at classification hearing.
Angie.
It's the numbers that you're getting, where they came from, yes, it's relevant, that's what I do as an assessor, is I come up with those numbers. If you wanna see the specific permits, Terrence, that's fine, but you have to have enough nu...
I think, Angie, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but, so since I've been sitting on one of these chairs, the first night I was here was one of your presentations, okay? Well, the second night you were here was one of your presentations. And from that time forward until right now, every expert that comes in here, from whether it's water, sewer, or somebody else, I trust what you're telling me.
Okay, good, I'm glad to hear that.
And I trust what you're telling me, and I support it.
Good, I'm glad to hear that.
But, but, when we ask for something, you can't get angry.
I'm not angry.
Number one, number two, this is, when, when we're talking about the five of us and Kevin, we're talking about a significant drop, right, in, in that particular area, you've gotta understand, we've gotta ask the question.
Yes, okay.
That's all we're doing. We're not saying, where's the information?
Okay.
I trust what you're telling me, but what we're saying, I think what we're saying is, it would be nice to know, just in general, where, where are the gaps in, in this, in this? Not your gap, not you, not, not Gateway, I'm not gonna say anything bad about Gateway.
No, it's, it's, no.
But what I'm saying is, what the people who hire us, Aaron, the police, yourself, my personnel...
I'm totally with you. If you want the detail, I can get you the detail.
I support what you guys tell me, all the time. I fight about it all the time in here, and I'll do that today.
I have no problem with that.
But what I'm saying is, when one of us has the audacity to suggest...
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, you can still make an educated decision tonight.
I understand you can't make an educated decision, but when there's something that large of a delta between, in a, in a 36-month period in a small town like Maynard, that's a big difference. If this was Cambridge, we would...
And I'm sure I can get you that information.
You know, this was Cambridge, thank you, this was Worcester, thank you, you know, Lexington even, some of these towns, it, it, it doesn't make a difference. That type of revenue, which is, you know, 12.1 million dollars, that type of missing valuation in Maynard over three years, that's troubling. Like, we're not saying it's troubling that you did something wrong.
No.
Or that the information is bad, but it's troubling enough so that everybody in this room, and everybody that, you know, is looking at a shift, everybody on the commercial side, the residential side, everybody should wanna know exactly what made up that drop. And that's all that we're saying. We're, you know, there's no one saying we don't support you, we don't try to...
No, but I'm also trying to say, Chris, that...
And I'm serious, too.
Even without that detail, you still have the information you need to make your decision tonight. Granted, you don't have the detail, but you have to know that the numbers that I'm presenting are accurate numbers, and I can get you the detail, which I will do.
Can I just add for a moment, like, I think part of what we're saying is that knowing, recognizing that this process is by necessity a lagging process and by the, due to quarterly structure of things, when we see that type of drop year-on-year, is there a, not a dialogue that is about what the split is, but a dialogue rather about what are the broader trends happening in town that we need to be aware of as a town, as the Board of Selectmen, as the town administrator, that are driving these drops? So not that it is a solution that your office would at all be in a position to address or change...
Correct.
But what are we, and I think that's what, you know, is fundamentally here, like, what is the issues broader than, that are behind the number drops? And is there a way that we can be having a discussion around that in a different type of format? You know, taking the point that the numbers are what the numbers are, it's, it's driven by what the data is. I think what we're all saying is like, whoa, it's troubling to be looking at this data in this context to say, what might this also be indicating? Did we make a poor decision in, did we make a poor decision with a zoning call? Did we fail to ask or think differently about the timing of a large-scale project that negatively impacted our tax receipts? I think those are the types of questions from going back to the data that we're saying, where can we identify lessons learned as we go forward, whether it's negotiating a development agreement, whether it's thinking about a zoning Board of Appeals decision, et cetera.
I think you're absolutely right, Cheryl.
So I think that's, that's what we're looking for.
Right, so basically, when you want that kind of detail, when you wanna look at that kind of detail, I do believe that, yeah, that it is interesting to see that that's happened, but I also feel that for the purpose of this meeting and setting a tax rate, you have to know that those values have been certified by the DOR, and they do ask for that kind of backup, and I do provide it. I'm just unfortunate, you know, I don't have specific properties, there's many of them, like Steve is saying.
I think, as Chris said, we trust the numbers.
I can do that, but for you to make a decision tonight, or imply that you can't make a decision tonight because you don't have that detail, I don't feel that that, that should hold you from, or stop you from making a decision tonight on how you wanna split the rate.
Mr. Chairman, may I make my...
He's next.
That's all right. All right, you do the floor.
Hi, William Doyle, 10 Vernon Street, I'm on the Board of Assessors, and I would just like to make a couple of comments on this. First of all is, you know, we did review the information that Angie has, and as you guys have, have already said, you have faith in her, I have faith in her, and the board voted on that, and so her, her numbers, we believe are factual, and as she said, have been approved by the DOR. A couple other things, though, right? I think that a comment was made about how are we gonna recoup this, this, the valuation and the talk about Mill and Main and some of the buildings. I think people understand there is no necessarily recouping that happens. The valuation of a property is the valuation of the property, and there's a process that's in place to go and reevaluate properties on a regular basis, but there is no expectation necessarily that happens, that money's going to be recouped because somebody's making a modification to it. Yes, you know, there's, there is the hope that somebody's making a modification because it increases that value, but we as a town cannot expect that something's gonna be recouped exactly from that project in the long run. The second thing is, in terms of trends, you know, this does speak very highly to one specific trend, and that is that we are losing commercial and industrial space. Even though we have these very large projects that are coming up, that everybody's anticipating is going to add tremendous value, you have to remember that these are projects by contractors, and they are going to build a property, and that's going to add some value to that. However, a lot of the tax that we are going to give is going to go to other people, right, through the triple net, you know, agreements that they have. And we made a very poor decision as a town many, many years ago when we were cash-rich to do the split tax rate, and that has had a significant impact on not just the small businesses, but the large businesses. And the reason why you're seeing that we are losing some of these properties is they just have not been successful. They have not been able to survive in this town, and we need to get to a point where we can move forward. Moving the commercial tax rate closer to the residential is imperative for our long-term plan. And when you talked about trends, Cheryl, right, what can we think about long-term? What have we done, right? This is a trend that we need to move forward. What we recommended as a particular tax rate is a very small incremental thing. And should we be going, you know, farther? Yes, we should, right, without a doubt. However, right, we have set a precedent that is gonna be very difficult to, you know, to crawl out of in terms of that split tax rate with the residents. By losing commercial, you know, even though we do do a decrease, because we are losing commercial, the percentage that the commercial is paying is actually going up, you know, in reality. And so I just want, you know, those are my comments.
Thank you, Sid.
Andy Moreland, 123 Summer Street. I look at the amount of commercial rate here, and I just, I think that, I hate to disagree, but I disagree. The split tax rate makes a lot of sense. The reason ta, commercial businesses have been leaving town is because the town doesn't have any cool. If you, people, people, any cool. People come to towns and invest in towns because, the same reason they go to Starbucks and they buy coffee there. And that's how come our coffee rate went up and up and up, because they were cool. Maynard needs cool to be able to grow, and businesses will come, the tax rate doesn't have anything to do with it, it's a very small amount, you know, the split tax rate makes a lot of sense, keep it there. Terrence, you're absolutely right. When I bought a piece of property here in this town, my tax rate went up almost 25%. I did nothing to the house except a little bit of superficial changes. My neighbors had the exact same problem, a bunch of young people buying along the street. Either the tax assessed rate was wrong when we bought, or we were capriciously overcharged. I think you need to check your tax assessor and her numbers very carefully. Enough said.
Just wanna clarify one thing, if you may, before Bill, before you talk. I'm in no way disparaging Angie as the chief assessor. I have a fundamental disagreement that I need information on the missing $6 million of revenue, that's it. All right? So I want Angie to know that, that's, my intent is not to poke holes in, in her numbers or her, her authority as chief assessor or a professional, it's simply that I want more detail, so thank you.
You ready now?
Uh, yeah, I'm open. If you guys are done talking about the, although, I wanna point out, it's not $6 million in revenue, it's $6 million in value, so big difference there.
Sorry. Bill, I got revenue on the mind, I'm in seals, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's $6 million missing.
Still real money. Two comments. First, I'd like you to look at page 27, the average tax bill. And up top on that table, the second to last column is state rank, and that's how high our tax bill is compared to the other 351 towns in the state. And we're 58, and that's not a great place to be. I would also suggest that maybe for next year, you wanna look at this number based on household income, because you're gonna find that we're in the top 20, which is really not the place you wanna be. So it would be a good informative thing to have in your package.
Say that again, Bill, sorry. Average work, income?
Tax bill per.
Average tax per.
Household income.
Household income.
Then I have a comment about page 28, which is a wonderful spreadsheet. And it looks very daunting. What it does, it calculates, you know, these, the tax rate options for various splits based on land values, which are set already because they've been approved by the state. And this page has a single variable, and that's the tax levy. So I'm gonna bring back the earlier discussion of, you have $80,000 extra in revenue coming in. Why not tax only what you need rather than taxing to the maximum you can? Because all you have to do is go into this little spreadsheet and change that one number by $80,000, and all your answers spit right out. It wouldn't take all that long to do. And to an early point, yeah, it's relatively short money, you know, it's like 35 bucks. But I'd point out that it's 35 bucks every year forever. It's an extra 35 bucks this year, extra 35 bucks next year, extra 35 bucks every other year. And I'd also point out that, yeah, it's 35 bucks, but you guys are going back and forth on a split tax rate of 133 and 132, and that's a $10 difference. So, you know, it's some money, and I think it's the right thing to do, is tax to only what you need, not what you can. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mike Anderson.
Yes, sir.
To clarify what they said, in order, there's an $80,000 difference between new growth and what we projected. We did not tax to the limit. We only, out of that, we left on the table 67,535. Where did the difference of 13,000 go? We did not hit local receipts last year, so in order to cover it, we had to use part of that. Other than that, we did leave it on the table. We did not tax to the limit this year. Last year, we taxed, we only left 5,000 on the table. And that was it. I mean, so the statement that where, you know, 80,000, the difference is really 13,000, and we were forced to use it because local receipts did not come in as we projected. So we did leave it on the table. It's not an $80,000 difference, because everybody is, you know, saying that it was 113, you know, we did leave most of it on there. It was done intentionally.
David, I took your question to mean that that 80,000 was gonna be automatically applied to future, it's not something, are you more concerned with using a wrong number?
No. I was referencing tax levy, the lower tax levies, to be a different, a lower number, albeit $80,000 lower, and therefore not have to tax as much.
Anyone else see any questions up here? Suggests a 1.32 spread. That's what the motion would be, and that's what Angie suggests. So change this motion, amend it. Move to approve that the CIP and residential tax rates, move to approve the CIP and residential tax rates with a percent of shift of 1.32.
I'll second it again.
Okay. Move further discussion on the board. All those in favor? Okay. It is now 8:49.
I need to ask one more thing. Sorry.
We're late, we're already voting.
No, it's, because once you take the vote, I do have the LA 5, which the Board of Selectmen do need to sign in order to...
I'm not closing your hand, then we'll sign.
Okay.
How's that?
Fine.
And make the motion to close the tax rate hearing at 8:49 PM.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? All right, what do you need signed?
The LA 5, which shows the excess levy, and that we did have this meeting tonight.
Okay. Well, Angie's chief, I'll signature this segment, and we'll go back to consent agenda, item number four, it means to be accepted and approved, the consent agenda as shown.
Second.
Thank you. One, two items, this is brave, slip and stroll, some ignored in seven. Any discussion on those four consent agenda items? Was there any discussion about consent? No? All those in favor? Thank you very much. Thanks, Angie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good holiday if I don't see yous.
Same to you.
One-day liquor license, approve to accept and approve the one-day liquor license with Zandvi Development LLC. William Doyle, began with a former Congregational Church, 82 Main Street, Maynard on Sunday, December 17th, from 4:30 PM to 8:00 PM, the 27th, Mere Community Band Christmas concert. All staff will be tip certified. The second.
I will second.
Could we just kind of write out the word congregation?
I was gonna say, was it really called the Congo Church at one time?
There is the Congo Church in town.
Will started it, he put it on his application.
Congregational, will you just spell out? All right, so, we have Mr. Doyle here, looking for a one-day liquor license. Would anybody like to ask Mr. Doyle any questions about his one-day liquor license?
You gonna have a specialty cocktail that night?
No, not allowed.
Where will you be actually serving alcohol?
In the very front of the church on the sides, so...
Like, the altar front, or the entrance?
No, no, the real front, the real entrance. As soon as you come in the entrance, there are two wings just in front of the steps that go up to the choir lounge.
Will, any sense on turnout, like, from prior years?
From prior years, the, we anticipate it to be a full house. There should be between 250 to 300 people is the estimate that we had. It's the 28th annual concert that they've done.
Do you stand to hear, because this says 27th.
I keep adding one.
All right.
It can sound more important.
Charge to get in to the event?
No charge, it's a community event.
For drinking, for...
Yes, correct.
For drinking alcohol.
And the intent is IDs at time of purchase, will there be, are they gonna get, like, wristbands, or you'll just do an ID with every purchase?
No, it'll be an ID for every purchase.
You the bartender?
I am one of them.
I'm the bartender.
Sure.
He's looking for tip-certified volunteers.
I have 10 years of experience.
Please ask me for my ID, I get flattered.
Okay, we will make sure we do.
Um, do we have some questions from the board?
Nope, I already heard about it, so.
Thank you for keeping it open, yeah.
All those in favor?
Good luck, you. New tradition.
Thank you, everyone. That was a great tradition, and I'm happy.
Well, new tradition with the alcohol.
Continue it, oh, yes.
Well, hopefully, I'm interested.
Now, the chowdering, I'm sure there's alcohol around here before.